It is seven oh three, I would like to call this meeting of the Robinsdale Area School Board together. It is Tuesday, April twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, Earth Day, and we are in the Education Service Center. Will the clerk please call the roll?
With pleasure, Director Bassett.
Here.
Director Bowman is here, Chair Evans Becker.
Here.
Director Hillingbrand.
Here.
Director Holmes.
Here.
Director Long.
Here.
Director Wiltou.
Yeah.
And Dr. Stallow.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, we definitely have a quorum. All right, the first thing up on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Bowman, seconded by Holmes. Seeing no fingers up, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have an agenda. Number three on the agenda, Ardell Proud, Cooper High School, please take it away Superintendent Stallow.
Excellent, I am delighted to, Principal Smith and a Cooper High School team are here to highlight opportunities for students to exercise their voice at Cooper High School and to show how to build student skills for them to use their voice now and into the future. We'll also hear from Emily and Chad, students at Cooper High School, on how exercising their voice affects their educational opportunities. We'll discuss experience, oh, Ms. Lizer will discuss her experiences growing up in and path back to the district. So thank you all for being here, Principal Smith, I'll let you take it over.
Hello and good evening, members of the board. Thank you for inviting us here. It is our pleasure to talk with you as a student. I would like to welcome my team up. Thank you Chad Hill.
And the mission of Robinsdale Area Schools is to inspire, educate, all learners to develop their unique potential and positively contribute to their community. Our agenda today, we are going to do introductions very soon. We're going to talk about how we incorporate student voice at Cooper. We're going to have some voices from our student speakers and from our Cooper alumnus. All right, introductions, of course, my name is Shawnee Smith, Cooper Principal. I also have Mr. Ned Nelson, Assistant Principal, Dr. Josh Mahan at Mantosa, Emily Blanchett and Chad Hill are student speakers today, and Amanda Leisure, alumnus. All right, so this is just some of the ways in which we incorporate student voice at Cooper High School. What we know is that student voice is vital in education as it empowers learners to actively participate in shaping their educational experiences. It fosters a sense of belonging, autonomy, and engagement, which are crucial for academic success and personal growth. By prioritizing student voice, we can better understand our students' needs, perspectives, and aspirations, leading to more inclusive and effective educational practices. At Cooper, students are encouraged to express their opinions, make choices, and collaborate on decisions, transforming them into partners in their learning journey. This approach not only enhances their confidence and communication skills, but also prepares our students for independence as they transition into adulthood. This is just one of our events, Black History Month, and I'll call up Emily Blanchett.
Hi, my name is Emily Blanchett, and so I'm part of Student Council, and we run the Black History Month Expo every year to highlight Black history and educate our students. And it's one of our biggest events every year, and we invite programs and organizations in the community to hold a booth, to like, reach out to students. Students have gotten like, jobs and internships through the Black History Month Expo, and we also allow students to perform through dance, song, or spoken word about Black history, however they would like, and we also have guest performances at the event as well. So it's a big community-building event, and it allows students to like, share a part of their history, because we do have a big African-American population at Cooper. So they have the opportunity to like, share their culture, learn about their history, meet organizations that they could be interested in, find pathways for future, and so that's how we use student voice in our Black History Month Expo.
Thank you Emily. All right, and our Student Summit, I'll call up Chad.
Hi, my name is Chad Hill, and I'm a junior at Cooper High School. One of the many things we do at Cooper is our Student Summit, we hold every year. We like to hold it before, sometimes, some years it doesn't get to that point, but some years we like to do it before the second semester, to see what we can change for the second semester. And we, we, every year we, we hold, we sign, classes sign up to come for a third and fourth hour usually, and come down and voice their opinions on how, how we can make Cooper better. And we, we collect all the data of what people say, and there's no answer is a wrong answer, we look at. And we, we take everyone's intake and we bring it back to a committee, and we look over and see what we can do and what Principal Smith can do to make Cooper better. So it's one of our, one of our best events that we do, to hear student voice, and for students to feel like they're advocated for, so yeah.
Thank you Chad. And HAWC connections, HAWC connections is something that we started this year to focus on our students that may have difficulty getting to class sometimes. And so HAWC connections gives us an opportunity to build those connections with our students, to figure out where the disconnect is. We have guest speakers, we do restorative circles, we do prizes, we celebrate goals that they have achieved, and we have seen a huge success with HAWC connections. To speak more, I'll invite up Dr. Mahan.
So with HAWC connections, one of the things we've been happy to celebrate at Robinsdale Cooper is non-punitive and exploratory circles. So we'll run restorative justice circles, we'll talk at length with our kids about why is it that they're not making it to class, and what it is that we can do as school leaders to help out our kids and to reach them. As you probably know, attendance is a big issue in large public schools across the nation, and we've been trying to find ways to connect with our kids in a meaningful capacity. And so with these restorative circles, what we've been doing is building relations, relationships, asking them about their experiences, try and find ways to connect with our kids, to bring them to school, and to make Cooper a meaningful and positive place for them.
Thank you Dr. Mahan. And upcoming events, Chad Hill.
One of our upcoming events, we're hoping to be our biggest event of the school year, is our Multicultural Fest, that's going to be held on April twenty ninth. I encourage all of you guys to come, it's going to be very fun. We are splitting it into two, two parts, the first part is going to be held during the school day, kind of like our Black History Month Expo style, where booths from outside of our, our district, or even within our district in school, come and, you know, just showcase their culture. We want to highlight every culture if we can that's represented at Cooper and really show what Cooper is all about. Also, we, the second part is a showcase, a talent showcase, an auditorium from six to seven thirty. Also encourage all of you guys to come in this room, so it's, it's going to be really fun. We're going to have a cultural, a fashion show, and dancing as well. So hopefully, hopefully you guys can make it, hopefully it'll be a good event.
Thank you again Chad, and I'll invite up Emily if she wants to say a few more words.
So I am a senior at Cooper High School, and it seems like every year I pick up a new activity or like, sport, so, and throughout all of these activities, I've been asked for my opinion at least once, or asked for my voice, my thoughts on something. And I think it's good to have those reminders that they want to hear your voice, and actually showing that you want your voice, they, like, everything that I've done has always been, what do you guys think, what would you guys want? Like, do you like this idea, like, we're old, not old, but we're older, so what was something that we don't understand, and it's, so throughout all these activities, I feel like my voice has been heard and been seen, and as a leader of some of these activities, I'm able to also share other people's voices who might not feel comfortable too. So it's good to know that there's multiple people in the building that I can talk to, because they all have asked me at least once what my opinion is on something. And in that photo, it's me and my dad at our Veterans Day breakfast that we hold annually, and that is a day for staff, students, and members of our community to come and share stories about service. We celebrate them with pastries, breakfast foods, and then we hold an open floor for them to just speak of how they feel, and hear their opinions and their memories and stuff. And it's an amazing experience every year. And another way that we also use student voice is that our GSA is currently working on a teacher education presentation to give a little extra information to teachers on how to best support LGBTQ students. So we're in the process of creating a slideshow and figuring out what we fully want to say and when we want to present this to them, and it's great that we have that opportunity. And I have the advisors working with me to create the slides and make sure that we cover everything that we want them to know.
Thank you Emily, and I'll call up Chad for a few more words.
I am, I'm a junior, I'm not quite at the senior, at senior level yet, but I feel like I've been at Cooper my whole life. Cooper, I spent a lot of my time at Cooper, to be very honest with you, in a good way, in a good way, in a good way. I enjoy it, you know, and I, I, I want to talk about the idea of service. I'm very passionate about service, I think everyone should be involved in service. And one of the quotes I have here, one of my favorite quotes by Mahatma Gandhi, is, he says, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." And I think that's a very impactful statement, because I feel like I do lose myself in service in a good way, and I feel like to, to serve others, you have to have a pure heart and nothing in return, looking for nothing in return, and that's what we look to do at Cooper. And I know that I do, is running certain events and being a part of certain events. And for instance, this was, this was a picture of me and Representative Ilhan Omar, when she came to Cooper several weeks back. I mean, I encourage everyone at Cooper, I, people ask me, how do you, how do you stay engaged and maintain grades and maintain yourself while being involved in so much? How do you not overwhelm yourself? I say, don't look at, look at it as a job, don't look at it, or else you're not going to enjoy it. Look at it and have fun, have fun with what you do. Just, just have a pure heart and look to help others always.
Thank you Chad, and I will call up Amanda Leisure, our Cooper alumnus.
Hi, I am Amanda Leisure, and this is a picture of me from being a Cooper Hawk. In two thousand, two thousand and one, we pulled these up from my good old cheerleading days. This is my seventeenth year being an educator at Cooper High School. I teach and coordinate Avid, and so when Chad joked that he feels like he's been at Cooper his whole life, I, I have been in Robinsdale my whole life. I had the pleasure of attending New Hope Elementary, Hosterman Middle School, and Cooper High School, graduating just a couple of years ago in two thousand and one. A fun fact, senior year I was voted most likely to be a teacher, and it worked. I have known that I had wanted to be an educator since I was in third grade. My third grade teacher, Mrs. Hellstrom, like, just like planted it in my heart, and I knew that it was really important to me to be like her and to be an educator. And I can, can think about all my times growing up in District two eighty-one, because that's what we were referenced more, and now we're Robinsdale Area Schools. And like, the sixth grade team of teachers who helped me really get my feet on the ground in middle school and understand how middle school works and how that's different. And my high school experience at Cooper, I was not only pushed academically, but supported in ways kind of beyond what we usually ask educators. The end of my sophomore year, my mom was diagnosed with breast cancer, and so over half of my high school career, my family was juggling that and managing that. And so to know that there were people at Cooper who had my back, and people who just genuinely cared, I feel like that has really set me on my path to be an educator, and different ways to make connections with students. And so I knew right away after I graduated from the University of Minnesota Morris that I wanted to come back in Robinsdale. And it just really makes me proud to have been a student here, and then also to be able to interact and work with students every day, so thank you.
Thank you Ms. Leisure, and thank you all for listening. If you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer.
You did it with sixteen seconds to spare.
We have a question, can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
The group that you started this year to get the feedback from the students who are not wanting to be at school or coming later, any general theme that you want to share with the board at all that comes to mind?
Is your question, do I have any general feelings?
Theme of, were there any themes there that were shared with you all about the struggles they're facing as students?
Yeah, what we heard, and would you like to share Ms. Mahan? We heard several things, and what we heard some of our students say is they didn't feel that connection, and when we pulled them in and had those conversations with them, they understood more. You can tell a student to go to class, go to class, right? But if you don't have that connection with them and, and have that circle in those intimate conversations, you really don't get to the foundation of what really the issues are. So what we found is a lot of our kids just didn't have the connection. They love coming to Cooper, they feel safe at Cooper, but not necessarily connecting with the adults in the building, and so that's what we provided during those times.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming, thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. Next up on our agenda, as soon as she gets back here, is our Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, good evening, Chair Evans Becker and School Board Directors. At Robinsdale Area Schools, our mission is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and to positively contribute to their community. We just saw two outstanding students, and earlier saw other outstanding students who, who are doing that every single day. Our collective work is focused on that mission, and tonight I want to share a few of the things in which we've been engaged. So before I move on to the rest of my report, I want to take a moment to recognize some of the most generous and essential members of our Robinsdale community, our volunteers. Each year, more than a thousand community members step up to serve in our schools. Together, they contribute nearly twenty thousand hours of their time, reading with students, preparing materials, organizing events, cheering on our teams, and helping make our schools feel like home. We see you, we appreciate you, and we couldn't do this work without you. To celebrate Volunteer Appreciation Week and say thank you, we put together a short video, so I want to allow everyone to take a look at that right now.
Volunteers come in and they make a difference in our kids' lives.
I would like to thank all the volunteers in our community. We appreciate everything that you do, your great help and support.
I think it was at the beginning.
Pivotal in my teaching.
It's intangible, the things that you provide, the learning opportunities that you provide, the unique skills that you bring that other people don't have. We really value the things that you bring to us.
The success of our schools would not be possible without our caring community and all of our volunteers that give their time to Robinsdale Schools.
We really appreciate seeing volunteers come through and their willingness to help in our classrooms here at Robinsdale Area Schools.
So I'd give a huge thank you to all the volunteers within the Ardell School System, and specifically to the volunteers that come out to Plymouth Middle School every single day.
Our volunteers come in and they make a difference in our kids' lives.
I would like to thank all the volunteers in our community. We appreciate everything that you do, and we are grateful for all your help and support.
The volunteers are instrumental, I mean, they are like, crucial, I guess as I would say, crucial to what we do, I just, we really actually could not do it without volunteers, we just flat out couldn't do it.
I really appreciate volunteers, because when things are getting tough, they keep me going.
On behalf of the Northport Community, we want to say thank you to our amazing volunteers for all the efforts that they have put in throughout the years to make a huge difference on our community.
We have hundreds of volunteers who serve our students and staff throughout our district each year. I want to thank you so much for what you do to give your time, talent, and expertise to helping make us better, and ultimately to elevate our district mission, our purpose, which is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and positively contribute to their community. We appreciate everything that you do.
I want to say thank you.
Thank you volunteers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you volunteers.
Lots of people, lots of hours, and truly amazing, so thank you. As we celebrate this week and into the next week, it'll be great. In the strategic priority theme of academic achievement, Armstrong High School Senior Kenny Garpyu has been awarded the Highly Competitive D Scholarship from the University of Saint Thomas. Each year, only ten students are selected for this full tuition four-year scholarship, an award that recognizes academic achievement, leadership, and a strong commitment to community. Kenny is an outstanding example of all three. She's a senior captain of the Afro Empire Dance Team and has participated in our Avid program for all four years of high school, showing not only talent, but also dedication to personal growth and higher education. Please join me in celebrating Kenny's incredible achievement. We're proud of her and can't wait to see what she does next. On April tenth, I was able to attend the opening of the Robinsdale Secondary Visual Arts Show on display at the Robin Gallery in Robinsdale. This annual showcase features an incredible artwork from our talented middle and high school students across the district. Each secondary school submitted about a dozen pieces, and the exhibit includes a wide range of media, ceramics, digital art, drawing, photography, and more. It's a fantastic celebration of student creativity and artistic expression. If you have, haven't had a chance to stop by yet, the gallery is open until April twenty seventh, so please try to take a look at that. In addition to our in-person art shows, I'm excited to share that the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Ardell Virtual Art Gallery is now live and available for students, staff, families, and our broader community to view and celebrate. This online gallery features incredible student artwork from every grade level and every school across our district, and again, you'll find a lot of different techniques, all organized by school. It's a great way to showcase and share the creative talents of our students with the entire Ardell community. I encourage you to take a look and enjoy the inspiring work on display. In the strategic theme of collaboration and partnerships, on April eighth, the School of Engineering and Arts had a unique opportunity to host international STEM leaders from Australia, India, and Japan as part of the International Visitor Leadership Program. During their visit, our guests heard directly from our, from four impressive fifth grade students who shared their experience working at the hands-on science project, raising rainbow trout from eggs with plans to release them into the wild next month. Visitors also had a chance to observe classroom learning in action, including two second grade classrooms and a kindergartner class utilizing One of C's outdoor learning spaces. A great example of how we bring STEM to life for our students at all grade levels. It was great to showcase the innovative and engaging learning that's happening every single day in our schools to an international audience. In our priority of community engagement, we continue to make strong progress with our Reimagine Ardell Vision 2030 engagement efforts. So far, we've reached more than eleven thousand engagement touchpoints, which is about twenty-three percent of our fifty-touchpoint goal. All of our community engagement meetings have wrapped up. We're still, we're grateful to everyone who attended and shared their insights and thoughts. The survey is still open through May fourth, and we're encouraging as many voices as possible to participate. We're finalizing grade-level conversations this week at Plymouth Middle School with, I was with seventh graders today, and I'll be with eighth graders on Thursday. And we also will start focus groups with students and staff in the coming weeks. We've also started something new, we're engaging our elementary students in a creative, age-appropriate way through activity books. The younger, the youngest of our students will be able to share with us how they imagine their ideal experience and share their ideas through art and storytelling. It's a great way again to ensure that all voices are heard, no matter the age. That's my report for this evening, thank you very much.
Super, thank you very much. We're going to move on to operations, and letter A is, whoops, wait, wait a minute. We're not going to operations yet. We have a District twenty-seven long-term facilities maintenance information, take it away Director Long.
Yes, at our last two eighty-seven district meeting,
Yes, at our last 287 district meeting, which was a couple Thursdays ago, they brought up their LTFM plan. And since we are one of their member districts, we pay a fee, and we also have them added on to our levies as a way of them having revenue for their school district so that they can operate with the students that are Robinsdale students along with their other member districts. So if Chief Financial Officer, if you could explain their plan to the board, and I will take back any questions that the board might have of them. I'll be meeting with them on this Thursday again.
Wonderful. Thank you. Chair Evans Becker, Directors, Superintendent Stallow. Thank you, Director Long, for that lead-in. I'm going to take a step back because what intermediate 287 is in the process of doing along with the member districts is they're actually starting, believe it or not, funding for the 26-27 school year. So when we start talking about levies, in specific LTFM, 281s, I'll be in front of you at some point too with our plan. It is, this is where it starts to get confusing, where we're now starting to begin to operate in three different fiscal years. We're currently in 24-25. As you heard, and we've been discussing for months now, the 25-26 budget. And as we work as far as putting information together for the levy, that moves us into the year of 26-27, collection year for our taxpayers of '26, and you vote on that in December of '25. So the levy is the component, the one component, that the board solely controls. A piece of that levy is for the intermediate districts. And because intermediates don't have the authority to levy themselves, because they serve multiple communities, they take their member districts, they say this is what we need as far as what we can levy, what legislative authority has allowed us to do. And we're going to ask that each individual member district vote on that so we are able to receive the funding we need. They too have long-term facility maintenance costs. They too have had the ability to issue debt. And what's not identified in this presentation or the materials that are provided is they will also be requesting levy for leases. And so tonight's focus and what will, moving forward with Director Long and what comes back from 287 is the long-term facility maintenance piece. There are seven items in the packet and listed in the board materials that anybody can look at. Ultimately, what they are doing by law is they are presenting a 10-year plan to say these are the areas that we need to identify as far as facility maintenance. And long-term facility maintenance is doing like-for-like. They, it's not adding, it's not, it's replacing like-for-like. There is also a component of the debt service of what they have already issued. Again, all these talking points were presented as part of the handout materials. So ultimately, when comparing what was done a year ago to where we are to date, as far as the LTFM piece, we're actually up. They're asking us to levy more for long-term facility maintenance by about $112,000, $113,000. What you don't see right now, and I don't know, Director Long, if this was discussed at your, at the board meeting for 287, was the lease component. And the lease component then is actually going down because the goal of 287, or at least what was my inference of what the materials provided, is that there's a recognition that they want to keep the levy piece or their levy piece flat, as do most districts typically. So LTFM is up. When we ultimately go to move forward, the lease levy will be down. The net result will be about a $5,000 decline from where we were a year ago. So that's the overall financial picture of the intermediates. That is why I'm in front of you today saying, here are the items that are listed. This is what they're doing. They need, 287 needs all 12 members to approve their plan. I will be in front of you to ask you to approve 281's plan. All of those materials are provided. And I guess at this point, I'll either turn it over to Director Long or I'll turn it over to the board directors for any specific questions you have because, again, there's a lot of detailed content, but that's ultimately the overall objective.
Thank you very much. Director Long, do you have anything you want to add? She said she might turn it over to you. Do you have any points that you wanted to share with us or not really?
No, I think you covered everything. And yeah, that was right. They did talk about the lease will be going down because they have a bond that that will be paid off in 2027. They'll have another one in 2029 that will also be paid off. And so then they'll do that reverse. And they were, like you said, thinking of our taxpayers in trying to keep it level.
Thank you. I don't see any hands for any, oh, Superintendent Stallow.
Not a question, but I just wanted to clarify because I know their timeline since they need approval from each district. Will we plan on coming forward at the May 5th meeting for action on this? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I hope so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if there's any questions, we'll try to get.
By July, yep.
Yeah. So if we, if board directors have questions, again, get those to Director Long or to me, and we can make sure that we get those answered so that you have the information that you need to take action on May 5th.
Director Bassett, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. And my comment kind of has to do with just the overall history of 287 and the fact that they're just continuing to maintain, I think, a steady cost is a good thing. And they've been maintaining that for a while. And it's been a while since I've heard about them redoing anything to their formula that we pay our tuition for students who go there. And so they worked on that some years ago and worked really hard on it in their finance committee. So it sounds like that that plan is still working. And so this seems reasonable. And thank you, Director Long and CFO.
You're welcome. Thank you, Director Bassett. All right. I don't see any other questions at this time, but if there are questions, please get them to the appropriate person so we can get answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Now we are moving into operations. And action item A is a resolution accepting the March 2025 donations. There were over $43,000 worth of donations in March. Do I have a move for the resolution to accept these donations?
I'm moved.
Okay. Director Hellenbrand and then Director Bassett seconded. And we'll waive the reading on the resolution. That's okay with both of you?
Yes.
All right. It's a roll call vote. I see no discussion. Please, let's do the vote on the accepting donations.
Great, thank you. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wu To?
Yes.
We have six zero.
Six.
Seven zero.
Seven zero, even better. Okay. Resolution carries. Item B, Ad-Hoc Safety and Security Committee Report.
We have not met again. We are waiting for administration to get back to us. I know we had talked about a couple dates and they've come and went. So if you all can just circle back with Director Long and myself so we can get something scheduled. And then I'm hoping, it looked like we're going to talk about the work session, the documents, because I didn't get an email from council, so I don't know if that's carrying over to work session from our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Governance Policy Procedure Manual Task Force Report. Director Bowman?
Sure. Greta and I have been meeting consistently for the last number of weeks, and we will be prepared on time with bringing it to the board prior to July 1, allowing the board to have the summer to read through it, make comments, and then we'll bring it back. We'll request a work session in September on it, hopefully with approval on this manual by, in October at the latest.
Thank you. Policy Committee, is there a report? Have they met? Have not met. Move on then. Administrative reports?
All right. We've actually got three reports this evening. I'm going to start out with Executive Director Williams, who's going to share some information about the Family Literacy Program. Thanks, Anthony.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Evans Becker, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stallow. Understanding that, you know, Family Lit was talked about tonight at the listening session and has been talked about quite a bit since the decision has been made to eliminate that program for the 25-26 school year. Just wanted to, you know, what I won't do tonight is I won't, you know, I don't want to speak. And I won't speak in ways that disparages the quality of the work of the program. You know, it has been a valuable program for the district. We're looking at reviewing the budget as we do every single year. Made a financial decision within Fund IV that the Family Lit program was not viable financially. It has been running a deficit. Early childhood family education is the area that funds that program. And for the last 10 years or so, it has been running a deficit. So to continue to operate the Family Lit program, we projected that, essentially, it runs off of a financial cliff within that, within that community education, early child, early learning budget. Looking at the impact of the families that we serve. We serve 27 families, 31 students currently enrolled in the site. Speaking with the students, 17 students would have enrolled next year because half of the students' kids are going to kindergarten. So it really impacts from our current student enrollment, 17 students. Since meeting with staff, students, we have worked with the early learning team to provide them with resources on how to connect with, you know, our early learning programming at our New Hope Learning Center, as well as recognizing that that program is offered differently than the Family Lit program. The Family Lit program is, you know, offered more hours. You know, where the program in that New Hope Learning Center typically is a two-hour, you know, early learning program, two-hour blocks. But we have also set aside, working with my director from School Edge Care, scholarships for families who would like to do, current families, not new families, but current families who would need four-day care. And we have our Early Adventures program, and we've set aside some space for them for next year if that was an option that they wanted to pursue, to continue to support the current 17 children who are enrolled in early learning. So those are things that we've done to try to mitigate the change, recognizing that it is a change. It's a tough change. Family Lit has a long history in the district. But we've tried to, A, be fiscally responsible and be recognize the impact that it does have on families. Once again, we didn't just make the decision and not talk to families. We met with staff, you know, we met with families, multiple family feedback sessions. You know, so I understand what the impact is really on those students. But this is the best way for us to really be fiscally responsible going forward. And space for questions.
Director Bassett?
And so, just to make sure I'm clear. So the Family Literacy Program services really are not being just moved over to the New Hope Learning Center. That is not an apples-to-apples move.
Correct. That is not an apples-to-apples move.
Okay. And so to the extent that you can, am I hearing you say that you're going to try to build in some additional resources into that program?
Yeah. So nothing we offer is apples-to-apples to Family Lit, you know, but we have gotten feedback from the students, and we continue to seek feedback from the students on what components, other than just the hour structure. We know that the hours are different. And, you know, in order to maximize the possibility of additional hours, there would be the Early Adventures program, which we would set aside some scholarships for students who want that option that's not at the Family Lit location. That's offered at two of our elementary schools. But in order to, we have asked students for feedback on what other resources they have that maybe we can, you know, utilize some of our funds to provide those other resources at the New Hope Learning Center, but it wouldn't be just transitioning the Family Lit program as it is from Crystal Learning Center to New Hope Learning Center. That's the model that's not working for us.
So Chair, I just have two related questions. And so then the offerings for the children at the Family Literacy Program, to what extent, if any, are we able to duplicate or provide a range of services similar to that? And then the partner question, which is Long Partner, and that is the impact, and you may not be prepared to talk about that. That may be CFO Holhazel's question at some later time. And that's the impact on the facility where the program has been, which has been at Crystal.
For the first question, I am going to call my counterpart up just to speak a little bit about the work that's happening at New Hope Learning Center and how they will support, you know, those learners, the resources. And what do you guys say?
Hello. So my name's Emily Levinson. I'm the Director of Early Learning. And to answer your question, the programming, while the hours are not the same at New Hope Learning Center, the staff continue to be licensed, they're providing the same curriculum, the same resources in terms of supporting families. There's parent educator support, lots of built-in resources at New Hope Learning Center. However, like Director Williams said, it's not, it's not the same. Their parents won't be at the building the whole five hours like at Crystal Learning Center currently. I'm not sure if I'm getting to your question exactly, but.
Well, you're answering the very question about our staff capabilities, but in that question, what begs the question is that if these children are the children of English-language learners, the capacity of the children themselves and the capacity of our staff to actually communicate with the children becomes.
Yeah.
That's the purpose.
Sure.
I mean, one of the purposes, so.
So I will say, we have many students that already are enrolled in our early learning programs across the district, both at New Hope Learning Center and in many of our elementary buildings that come to school not necessarily speaking English, right? And we have lots of amazing staff that have professional development and experience in supporting families. Will it look exactly the same? No. Do I have every confidence that our staff can support children who come to school, maybe not speaking English or English isn't their first language?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Holmes?
I guess I'm looking forward to hearing more back after. I don't know if you were here for the listening hour session and then just catching up with the superintendent on some of the points that were brought up about, could this drive enrollment? Is there a waitlist? Was there no advertising before? I don't know if you can speak to it tonight. I'm just speaking to what I heard tonight that were points of interest. And obviously, you didn't know what was going to be said or not. And then just the communication piece. If we knew that it's been operating for 10 years at a deficit and it's producing this kind of pushback, I guess I just, I look forward to how we're going to improve communication because financially, we can all look at it and say, with those numbers, it just doesn't compute. And then we have the human component, and I know we're all listening to that. But if we can start connecting those pieces, it's going to build back trust. Maybe it will drive enrollment. So I'm looking forward to hearing more on those pieces, as well as that lease for that center because I know that's a real estate component, and I don't know when we will be covering that.
So to try to answer just the parts that, you know, when it comes to just the advertising component of it and really, so Family Lit operates, it's not an open enrollment. Anybody in the community, anybody in the community can just go there to, you know, they can if they're one of our adult academic program students. So they have to be enrolled in the adult academic program to participate in that particular program that's at Crystal Learning Center. So the advertising is typically done within that student population. Once again, and the student, you correct me if I'm wrong, because you can always say, no, that's not right. But that's my level of understanding of that. And then, you know, when we talk about the population that we serve there, we serve over 1,100 students there throughout the year. Remember, it's adult education, so it's come and go. And of those 1,100 students, right, we have, you know, a small population who actually access that program. Once again, that doesn't mitigate the value of the program, but that's just the raw data points of it. When you talk about the 10 years of deficit that I referenced earlier, that's me just, I wasn't here 10 years ago, but that's me just doing a look back on the data, right, and seeing the trajectory, and then also doing a projection of, we're already dipping into the fund balance. This year is projected at $154 for that, for that, you know, for early childhood family education. Continued trajectory. Once again, it falls off of a fiscal cliff there. But funding, official funding for Family Literacy Program was stopped, I believe, 2011 under the Obama Administration. It was called the Even Start Program, and that ended in 2011. We maintained Family Literacy beyond that, you know, but the official, you know, funding for Family Literacy and that structure was ended in 2011.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. It's just the more facts we can get out because we are not emotionless here. We are facing huge budgetary challenges, and there is a human component. And we still have a major problem with a lease over there and the numbers that were served. So thank you for that. So thank you for that. I just hope we can continue to connect dots for that, and then, I don't know what the outreach is to those families who, how often you're meeting with them, I mean, obviously, they're still coming here, and making sure that they know these opportunities. So just my general thoughts for now, and making sure we can, we can connect, because we can't keep saying that students and staff are our heartbeat, and then treat them in a way where they feel like they're not being heard or informed.
Is it okay if I speak to that? I have some information about that. So we shared information with families and had some listening sessions the week before spring break. The week after spring break, the early learning social worker and one of our early learning coordinators, since April 7th, have spent over 20 hours connecting and meeting with families individually over at Crystal Learning Center and supporting them in registering and finding early learning classes that would fit for their families next year. And to date, we have nine out of the 14 Robbinsdale School District families that live within our school district. Nine of the 14 families are in the process or fully registered for a program next year. And then, out of the, I think there's like 10 or 11 families that live in other school districts, we have connected with them and helped them register for programs in their own district. I think, I want to say, three or four of those families out of the 10, we've helped them connect with their home district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Helen Brand?
Yeah, and I'm sure you guys have considered a lot of different things, and you don't have to answer us necessarily right now, but I was just curious, you know, it sounds like it costs more because it's a longer period of time in the day, and I was just wondering if you guys considered changing the model of delivery, but I'm assuming that you probably did. So, you know, just throwing that out there in case you didn't, and just curious, what funding is used? Are you using school readiness, BPK?
Yeah, ECFE funding, and then a small portion of adult academic funding, but primarily it's all ECFE funding.
Okay, so, right, right, some of that school readiness money, so, okay. I was just curious what funding sources were being used, and so, obviously, that funding is now being, and is, continues to be used in preschool classrooms around the district, so, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent Stallow?
No, I was going to go on to the next report.
I just have a comment for Superintendent. I'm looking at you, Chair, so...
Can you make it like in 10 seconds?
I can do it in 10 seconds.
Can you do it in five?
So Superintendent, one of the things that occurs to me is that, when I hear the term "connect the dots," with the change away from the system's accountability, having all that merged into the world's best workforce, all of that stuff merged together, opportunities for directors to be engaged in understanding what's happening in terms of curriculum, where there are changes, and also understanding where the connections are with regard to cost, those opportunities have moved away, because we don't have that component in the way that it had, used to be. And I'm not advocating for how it used to be, I'm just simply saying that some of the questions that directors might have about programming, when they were on the committee, they had an opportunity to talk about that, understand it better, that is gone, you know. And when I think about our demographers report, that talked about the increase, where we do see growth in our community is in the eastern side of our district, and those programs, and where we see more children is in that population as well. So I'm just thinking about those things in terms of future focus, and just sharing that with you as a comment, because it brings it all together in my mind for programs like this, and how do you go for 11 years and not know that there's not a trend?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. The next report, then, thank you very much, Emily and Anthony, appreciate your answering questions and your report. Next, I'm going to invite Executive Director Gronke and Director Boyden to come and talk a little bit about the change in model for health services.
Good evening. Chair Evans Becker, School Board Directors, Superintendent Stallow. I'm going to welcome Director Boyden to come up and speak to you about the nursing model that she was deeply involved with.
Good evening, Chair Evans Becker, Directors, Superintendent Stallow. I just wanted to talk about the context of how we came to the nurse model change. I want to start out by stating that change is hard, and these decisions are extremely difficult. I know I should be removing the people from the positions, but that's really hard to do when you work day in and day out. So as you received an email on Thursday from Dr. Stallow, some things that I considered for this model change. Just know that my goal was to develop a more sustainable model that allows us to continue meeting student needs while aligning with our fiscal responsibilities. So the first thing I did was look at the historical context on our model, that our model change that we've had the last five years. I think every year, it's been fluctuated, primarily due to vacancies and shortage of staff. I reviewed health models in comparable districts, looked at districts that had similar numbers, similar buildings, I consulted with other health professionals and leaderships from other districts, really to gain a better understanding of what are the challenges, what are the benefits, because either decision, there's going to be consequences either way. Research staffing formulas, what other districts use, and then sought input from my own health services staff, and from Robbinsdale administrators. So with all those in mind, I also made sure that our wraparound supports that we have in the district were not, the FTE still supports that, and looked at strategically placing center-based classrooms spread out throughout the district, more so that we didn't have clumps of center-based classrooms that we required such health services needs, primarily the RISE students. With that, my structure, I believe, allows for a little bit more flexibility than what we currently have in our system now. I do have a training plan in place for the new staff that we will be hiring. There are some contingencies with that plan, and that is basically that we get applicants. That is going to drive any model that we have in the next year, and so, I'm hoping that we're going to do lots of marketing and really get those applicants, and have a great year with our new nursing model staff. Questions?
Director Helen Brand?
I just want to say thank you for the way you presented that information, and talked a little bit about how you came to the decision that you came to. And I don't know if other board members or even the public knows this, but actually, state law says there only needs to be one nurse for the whole district. So, not saying that that's adequate, not saying that that's what we want, but, you know, we are well within compliance with your new plan, so I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done on it, but especially giving us that background on how you came to that. Thank you.
Director Holmes?
My count, the board has received two very detailed emails from nursing staff. Have you been privy to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wonder if we could have a work session conversation on this to flush out those concerns. There were a lot of points, and I didn't email because they are so concise in that email, and it came twice, coming from experts in this field, and so, it's kind of just a ditto. Those emails were very poignant, they had supporting documentation, and then, just to hear you say that you hope we're going to market and get the positions filled is concerning for me. And I know you can't control that, but that seems like a roll of the dice for next year in pairing with those emails, so I am still very concerned about this change in model.
Director Wuto?
Yes, I just have one quick question. So it sounds to me like the spreading of the center-based programs in the district needs to happen to support your model that you have currently, that you are proposing. Is that correct?
They went side by side.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no more questions?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Tony. And our last report this evening, our last report is Chief Financial Officer Hoheisel, who's going to share an update on transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. If you were looking ahead, as far as the agenda goes, the Licensed Staff Personnel Reports indicates a resignation from Carrie Johnson, our Director of Transportation, and that is effective next week. So the plan, just to update the board on the plan for that position, is it is posted. As soon as Carrie gave her notice, we posted the position, we are required to post 10 days, and then going through the process. In the meantime, given, honestly, the timing of year, people think that because it's not snowing, transportation becomes easier, but anybody who's lived through students in the spring knows how active they are, whether it be sports, or field trips, or planning for summer school, there's a lot of moving pieces happening right now. And so, the plan would be to enter into a short-term contract with CISO, who would then provide the services for the Director of Transportation. Ironically, that will be Carrie Johnson. Carrie is leaving the state, she's moving, and would be able to provide those services remotely of what she's currently, at least a component of what she's doing now, until we are able to get the position filled with a qualified applicant. Any questions?
Oh, wasn't expecting that twist. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't quite expecting that twist either.
Director Holmes?
Related to transportation, but not to that, just because as a family member, I got the text of the urgent request to do the opt-in for our transportation, so I want to mention that, so it gets some airtime and ask people to pay attention to your texts and your alerts.
Yes, that, it matters. It's very crucial that people respond to the opt-in to transportation.
Thank you. Opt-in to transportation. Okay. Any other administrative?
Nope, that's great, thank you.
Thank you. Then we're going to move on. The second to the action, consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are voted on with a singular resolution, a singular motion, and any item can be removed by a board member. Is there a move to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Moved by Director Bowman, were you seconding it?
I will second, but there is an item I'd like to pull for discussion.
Okay, what are you wanting to pull?
It might just be a question, but is the discussion regarding the Financial Advisory Council, so, some of the comments that are in here, I was at that meeting, and I don't recall those comments, so, but we can discuss it, we can move everything, I'm fine with everything else, so if you want to move all of it.
So, Director Holmes?
I'm pulling the Licensed Staff Report.
Licensed Staff. Okay, well, is the, okay, so that's pulled, the motion is to approve the consent agenda except for the Licensed Staff Report. Okay?
And, did you hear what I asked you previously? I, as I said, the discussion regarding the FAC, that's what I asked for, to have that pulled.
That's not on the...
It's in the minutes. Well, it's in the minutes, which are part of the consent agenda.
Oh, so you want to correct the minutes?
Well, it's in the consent agenda, and you'd asked for things, and I just raised it as an issue.
Okay, so my question is, do you want to pull the minutes and watch the video?
Well, what I'm saying, what I asked you to do is pull it, and we can discuss it. Now, because it doesn't reflect some of the, I was at the meeting, and some of these, and I have some concerns about some of the things that are stated here, and to allow those, since you've asked me and asked me to discuss it now, as opposed to if we pulled it and talked about it...
I was just unclear when you said it, I thought it was not okay, and it was okay.
We can pull it, and then talk about it later, and we can pass everything else. It would be okay with me, with the exception of what Director Holmes asked to pull.
To be clear, are we pulling the minutes, or are we approving them and maybe amending them later? What was, what did you land on?
I just asked to pull that for a discussion, but if you're asking me if we want to pull it, I just say pull it, and we can come back and we can discuss it later.
We can definitely...
There are no minutes to that, because that's just a meeting of committee members. That's not something that's taped, that's something that we were all at, and there were three of us directors who were there, as well as community people.
Just a point of order, these notes have to do with our work session, not the actual committee meeting.
All I did is I wanted to pull the discussion regarding the FAC, that's all I asked for. So Director, you know, Evans Becker continued to ask me questions about what I asked to pull.
Okay, so, to clear things up, are you correcting, are you pulling the minutes related to our previous discussion about FAC? Or is it something to do with the discussion that we're having later tonight?
I am asking to pull the discussion regarding the Financial Advisory Council from the minutes that are, as they are presented, or in our packet for consent agenda, they are presented as the minutes from the work study, and so that would be where they're from. So, the work study minutes, work session minutes, rather, are included in the consent agenda packet.
Got it. Okay. So, we are going to vote on the consent agenda minus the work study summary, and minus the Licensed Staff Report.
Okay.
Got it?
Well, I had it, you know...
Well, I'm glad we're all on the same page on that now. All right? And when is consent?
I'm still unclear as to, I understand the staff report, but which section of our meeting minutes are we striking?
Okay, under 7A2, the draft of the minutes.
We are in the summary minute of the work session?
Right, under 7A2, the second one, April 7th, work studies, session summary minutes, draft. We're going to pull that from the consent agenda, and we are pulling for a separate vote, the Licensed Staff Report, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
And what we need is a roll call vote on this.
Got it. Director Bassett?
And this roll call vote is for the balance of the consent agenda?
The balance of the consent agenda, the entire consent agenda except...
I understand, I just was making sure that what I was voting for, and I vote yes.
Super.
Director Bassett votes yes, Director Bowman votes yes, Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Helen Brand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. The consent agenda passes minus those two items. What we will do with the draft of the minutes is I will re-watch that work session again, and bring that back at another meeting. And now, the last thing is the Licensed Staff Report. Yes?
So, I haven't even proposed or said what my comments are.
Okay, well...
If you're coming to that issue first, I didn't know what order you wanted to take them, to things that we pulled, so...
Well, I figured we would need to re-watch the minutes to...
Well, you don't even know what my concern is, you know, so...
Okay. If you would like to tell me your concern, I'll particularly watch for that.
Well, yeah. So, not only would you watch for it, all directors can watch it should they choose to, because this is not a decision that we're landing on you, that, let's just clarify that, it's not your decision.
I'm happy to have other people watching.
I'm just saying, if you want to watch it, great, but that's not your decision to review it and make that decision alone. We were all there.
Yep.
For the work session.
So your point?
So my point is this, so my point is that these minutes, which, where we discuss them, where we landed is that we were going to take information back to the FAC and have a discussion, which we did. And so, some of the conclusions determines preferences, and let her know, discuss the FAC, asking the board to review the bylaws and let her know how they want to proceed to determine preferences regarding whether the board treasurer should be on the FAC representing the board, or treasurer plus two additional directors. I don't recall that being discussed at all, because when we talked about who was going to be on the committee, that was a discussion that happened back when we did our committee assignments, and I volunteered, and Director Bowman volunteered, which historically, that's what directors do if they want to serve on committee, and this committee in particular is a committee of the board. So it's not a decision that CFO Hoheisel would make, nor the superintendent would make, it would be something that first would go to the FAC, and then we'd come to the board if there's anything changing, because it's part of the bylaws. So, I didn't understand these when I saw them, I'm like, we didn't just, you know, this wasn't the discussion.
I can clarify.
And further, that was just one point.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, the one thing that I do recall that we talked about is whether the information should go to the FAC for review first, and then come back to the board, and we agreed again that we needed to go to the FAC and get feedback from them in that meeting, in that work session. That's what we decided.
That's what we decided. And then the candidate application process, we talked about that. And I, you know, so I don't know this, this last conversation about the district CFO running the FAC, the, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that that committee has historically had a citizen chair. And, and, and everybody has always looked to our CFO to be a part of the meeting and to help guide discussion and if there's more information. No one ever went directly to get information without going through whoever our CFO was, our finance director. That's always been, that's always been in place. So there's nothing different than anybody has ever advocated, which is not to. However, it's clear that it, so there are a couple of things still under discussion. That's one of my points. So these minutes should not reflect these things as something that was determined in that work session because they weren't. And I think that when things are accepted and in minutes and there's no clarification, the tendency is for people to think that later on, when you refer to it, people come back and say, well, no, we decided this. That's happened a few times. We decided this, we decided that. Because often I just, if, if they're not too out of whack, I just don't go into the minutes. But this one, because the board established the FAC as a board committee, if there are changes to that, there are not changes that are going to be determined singularly by the CFO and the superintendent. We may land there, there. But recommendations and guidance, I mean, I, you know, I just want to make sure that we are clear about what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you, Director Bassett.
Thank you.
Here's the thing. We are talking about the FAC tonight in the work session and every board member is supposed to look at the bylaws and bring back their suggested changes. So we will be able to discuss a lot of the things that you were mentioning. We will not vote on those minutes tonight. We'll pull them, we'll adjust them and bring them back at another meeting.
Well, Chair, my comments didn't go to any of that. My comments just really talked about these minutes right here and that they should be clarified. I realize that we're going to have a discussion tonight at the work session. In fact, CFO Hoheisel and I have spoke briefly to that fact that we're going to talk about them. Because actually, even the, the notes from the meeting that were posted, what we talked about is that they're just a draft. Because, and I could not even edit them. I'm, you know, because we were asked to go back and edit them and edit the bylaws and I didn't have the capacity to do that. So I'm, I'm just saying to you that these are the things that I want to make clear of because, you know, that, that, that are of concern and we'll talk about it later in the meeting. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. And we each did receive a paper copy of the bylaws to make our.
I don't want to debate that. I'm just saying, this is what my issue.
Let's move on.
Yeah, please.
Let's move on. We will, let me, Director Helen Brand?
Yeah, first of all, I, I, this is just reflecting the discussion, doesn't say any decisions were made. And the bylaws currently say only the treasurer is on the committee, just for points of clarification. But we pulled this, but then are we going to decide if we're going to approve them or not?
We're not going to approve them tonight. We're just going to pull them. We can approve them at another meeting if they get rewritten. And we are going to move on to the licensed staff report. And that is item 7B1. So is there a move to approve the licensed staff report?
Some moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
To approve it, right?
To approve the licensed staff report. Yes. It's been moved by Director Bowman, seconded by Director Bassett. Director Holmes?
I will not be supporting this and I tried to seek out clarification previously on various points in terms of how things have changed in, in regards to compensation packages. And I asked for clarification on how it relates to the current contract, which the board does approve, the changes. I had questions around individual board meetings that we had and then a memo that was presented to us, the decision based off of those meetings and reflection. And I asked for clarification on that and I got back, I believe, which was your interpretation of it, but there were specific legal questions in there in terms of serial meetings or being transparent to the public about when we are increasing compensation. That's typically been done. A consultant was used, all of these things that I just don't feel comfortable with. So I will not be supporting it.
Thank you. Director Long?
I also will not be supporting it. I do not know what the cost is. I know there were some one-on-one meetings where things were discussed about this and I don't feel like that was very transparent to the public about moving forward with this, especially when we have a $21 million deficit that we have to deal with and we made cuts to our classrooms. Maybe if, you know, the cost and some of the other concerns were discussed amongst us at board members, I could support this, but at this point in time, I cannot.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Well, I will say that I, I was, I didn't have a one-on-one conversation that I recall talking about this compensation package. So if that happened, I, I don't think I was one of the ones. Was I present for the, we had a one-on-one about this?
Yes.
Oh, I don't, I don't recall that. We may have had a conversation where you talked about some of the challenges and needs. So I'm not saying that you, you didn't, but I'm just saying, I didn't have a clear, and what I said to you earlier today, tonight, and I will say again, I think that it's very clear that for, to me, that the superintendent is the person who hires all of her team. I don't have a problem with that. I never have. The fact that we, there were some, some conversation about compensation that raised some concerns, what I said then, superintendent, what I say now is, just because it's wise sometimes to have conversation with your board about things. Because then people can, just like Director Long said, they can get out, it's not that you have to, but sometimes it's a good thing to do so we don't come to an impasse like this. It's just, it's just goes into relationship building and, you know, and everybody has their own judgment call about these things. I too am uncomfortable that we're spending so much money and that we're, we're making changes. But, but on the other, the balancing act for me is, you need help. It's a big job. We've just lost our associate assistant, there's so many titles, but we've lost an assistant superintendent position and you need that support and help. So that, to me, overrides a lot.
Director Bowman?
I'm just going to speak to it. I'm going to support this because if we're going to reimagine the district, we have to pull some new talent in here. I think that the talent that we're pulling in complements the current leadership team that has been put into place under Dr. Stallow since last July. I think it's part of the building blocks for the future. I think it's part of the whole reimagine, to be able to have the support to our executive team, to help carry forth, reimagining and rebuilding this district. It's going to be a huge and heavy lift. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that it's also really unfair to me in many ways when we talk about employee relationships is to think that our superintendent should be working 20 hours a day along with our CFO, along with our Director of Human Resources and all the rest of our executive cabinet. The executive cabinet has been shrunk and there are gaps within that executive cabinet that need to be filled in so that we're not making gaps bigger and wider. We all, and I also believe in making this move, the reporting to this board will be better. I'm, I'm confident that the new leadership that's coming to play within this district, from what they have shown me, bring forth more information than I've seen, greater transparency in the way in which things are being done because things are being talked about from a process perspective. So I support the superintendent in this hire and I support voting yes on the licensed staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to speak. I would like to say, I believe that the best thing this board ever did was hire the superintendent and I believe we should support her and her decisions that are being made. And if this is the superintendent assistant that she needs, I'm all in. I'm a yes. On Director Long, did you want to finish out your two minutes?
Yes, if I could. Thank you. I guess I am just confused about, you know, when it comes to our students and services that they need, why it is okay to strip those away from them, to put them in environments where class sizes will be larger, to take away nursing supports from them, to take away the support staffs that they need. We've had several people here today talking about it. We've had several people at other listening sessions talking about it. So I guess I get not understanding the disconnect we're having when it comes to providing the direct supports that we provide to our students versus the direct supports that are provided to adults. And I would really like to see an emphasis on the direct supports that we provide to our students.
Thank you. All right. Clerk Bowman?
Superintendent.
Oh, sorry, Superintendent Stallow.
I think it's important that I bring my voice into this conversation. First of all, I want to clarify with the board and the community, I did hold one-on-one meetings with every board director about my concerns about the current salary with the entire executive cabinet. I did multiple, looked at multiple data sets from surrounding districts. We did have, I did make a request to have a, a study done on this as well. I knew how difficult it was when, before me, when the posting went out for a qualified CFO. And I know at that time, so I was following past practice in terms of providing, using contract language to increase salary. And I shared that with board members. I also took the input from board members and I didn't do everything that I had talked about, but I did increase the assistant superintendent position, knowing how vital that position is to instructional leadership and leadership capacity building. I also want to go on record to say that the assistant superintendent position is actually now going to be taking on the duties of two executive cabinet positions because of the restructure and the reduction that I made at the executive cabinet level. I am beyond thrilled at the candidate pool that we had. It's no secret across the metro area, the complexities and difficulty and challenges of this school district. I've been told numerous times, this has to be one of the absolute most difficult school districts to lead right now. They're all hard. I don't say that. Leading any school district right now is really very, very difficult. I was beyond delighted with the applicant pool that we had. The number of experienced administrators who are choosing, in the same way that I chose, in the same way that our CFO chose, in the same way that our new Director of Facilities chose, to come into a district that needs us. And I'll make mistakes along the way and I'm not going to make people happy along the way, but I made a promise to all of you that I would serve and help move this district forward in a way that our kids deserve and need and I will do that. And the only way I can do that, if I have a team around me who is beyond excellent. So tonight, I hope you are approving my recommendation on an assistant superintendent. And I hope that that person is greeted by this board and our community and our staff and our leaders in the same way I have been. Because I have been treated by this community well, again, people aren't always going to be very excited about some of the hard decisions I have to make. But as I've talked to over 11,000 people in this reimagine RDL process, I am so impressed by this community, which inspires me every single day to work those long hours and to work on behalf of kids, just like y'all do. So I didn't do anything, I want the community to know this, I didn't do anything that wasn't allowable in my contract. I hear what you say, Director Bassett. I could have done it differently. I chose to have individual meetings with each board member and to use language on the contract to hire an absolutely excellent assistant superintendent. I also want to say one other thing that I just want to be sure is very clear with our community. Anytime we bring hires forward, there's always the notion, because of the timing, it says pending board approval, that we, we never wait. I, I shouldn't say never. I would need my executive director of HR to assist me with that. But throughout my career, people are offered positions, accept positions, and then those positions come forward on a personnel report. So again, nothing was done differently than the protocol that has been established, not just here, but across the state. So with that, I am delighted that on the personnel report is a new assistant superintendent and I can't wait for him to start and help us serve our students, staff and families.
Thank you, Superintendent Stallow. I don't see any mother, any more hands up, so. Well, a clerk, please call the role on voting for the licensed personnel staff report acceptance.
All right. Excuse me a minute. Okay. Director Bassett?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, can you come back to me? I'm thinking about this.
Director Bassett?
She, she passes for the moment. She wants.
Passes, okay. Director Bowman votes yes. Director, let's see, Chair Evans Becker?
I vote yes.
Director Long?
No.
Director Helen Brand?
Yes.
Director Wu To?
Yes.
Okay, back to Bassett.
Director Holmes?
No. Back to Bassett.
Yep. And Director Bassett?
I'm voting yes.
I have to too. Motion carries.
Motion carries, five-two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an assistant superintendent.
Yay, congratulations.
Congratulations and welcome. Okay, let's see.
When do we meet him?
Pardon me?
When do we meet him?
Hopefully at the next board meeting. I'm confident we will. Okay. Moving right along, flipping to page two. Next up on our agenda is board report. Now, I would like to start with Director Holmes.
Yes, and I will be concise, but I'm also covering the listening time.
You get, you get a little bit of freeze period here.
I facilitated listening time tonight and we had 13 speakers. Four speakers were dedicated to WAVE and I'm not going to address them individually. I'm just going to carry through the themes. They spoke to the strength of staff in supporting their students and the growth that they're seeing their students make, that they wouldn't without these staff members. They spoke to consistency of staff and locations being important for students who are supported in the WAVE program. They spoke and gave examples of students having been, for example, a second grader and has had three different school locations and how that can contribute to not meeting their goals in their IEP or regression in the progress they were making. So it's just an overwhelming support of the staff at the WAVE program and the location at Zachary Lane Elementary because of the strength that they've had there and the consistency they're advocating for it to remain open. We also had five individuals speaking on the family literacy program. Again, giving kudos to the staff that have worked with them and their students and their children and the growth that they have made and the welcoming feeling that they had as they were going through this program and how they can't measure the success of it and the impact it's had on them and their families. Emotional people who are looking to have those resources continue and just can't imagine not having those services offered. We also had a speaker for the orchestra program and advocating for keeping the fourth grade program, spoke to the history of how it was developed, who created it, the, the impact on students and what they learn from those components, tying it to science, math, just detailed explanation of what it means to be part of the orchestra program and what the students learn, advocating for that fourth grade not to go away, fourth grade component not to go away and actually to strengthen it. General concerns about who is making the decisions in the district. Yes, these are complicated and hard decisions, but there seems to be communication concerns, just cleared, looking for clarity from the board and the superintendent on what and when is being decided. And then we also had, we ran out of time because we had a full house and we did have somebody I didn't get to who dropped. somebody I didn't get to who dropped out, and she's going to be emailing the board as well, but wants to know what teachers, counselors, nurses, et cetera, options are going to be removed. Parents are looking for how this is going to impact them on a day-to-day basis. The uncertainty is not comforting, and wanting to know what their options are, having board members silenced for asking questions that were not clearly explained or new approaches are needed is not okay. That was echoed by another speaker as well, who had concern over our last meeting and the engagement with our legal counsel. So again, thank you to all those people who came and spoke with us, and we hope you continue to use your voice and support 281, and we look forward to hearing from you. Then for my own report, I want to highlight being part of Teacher of the Year Committee, and just bear with me while I complete this. I had the great pleasure of volunteering on the Teacher of the Year Selection Committee this year. On behalf of the Teacher of the Year Committee, I would like to extend our heartfelt appreciation and admiration to this year's 19 nominees for their exceptional dedication to the students of District 281. In addition, I want to share an overview of just what that process looks like, so you all can have an understanding and hopefully be nominating your favorite educators going forward. Teacher of the Year nominations open up in November and are closed by December 31st. Information about nominating a teacher is in the direct line and on the RFT webpage. All schools are notified and given information in hopes that they share it with the teachers, staff, and families in their community, so please do that. Families, if you want to nominate someone, reach out to your front school office and see how that process can work. Some schools will post signs, so you might see it at conferences or an event, so please, please pay attention. Once nominations are closed, nominees are contacted and congratulated by the Teacher of the Year Committee Chair, and this year it's Deb Olson. She does a lot of work, easy to work with, super friendly and thorough, amazing person. And then nominees are invited to fill out survey questions by a specific date. Not all choose to do so, I thought that was interesting, they just, some don't want the recognition and go about their business. Again, like I mentioned, this year there were 19 candidates who completed those questions. Those surveys were then distributed to the selection committee, which typically consists of 12 to 16 people, I think we fell smack in the middle this year. And then throughout March, our committee read and utilized a rubric to score surveys. Results were tabulated by the committee chair, and the four highest-ranking teachers moved forward to in-person interviews on April 15th. This year's finalists were Raquel Gatin, and I'm sure, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Raquel, she's a fia teacher at Zachary Lane Elementary, Marcus Hahn, a band director at Cooper High School, Becky Harmon, an avid teacher at Sandberg Middle School, and Catherine Hibbs, a center-based sped WAVE teacher at Zachary Lane Elementary. The Robinsdale Area Schools Teacher of the Year will be announced at the Seven Dreams Teacher of the Year Celebration on Wednesday, May 21st, at Cooper High School Auditorium. All are welcome to attend. And I'll close by saying, beyond the 19 candidates for Teacher of the Year and the four finalists, congratulations. I would like to personally offer my sincere appreciation to all of the teachers within our district. The immeasurable talent and knowledge you bring to your classrooms, even on the hardest days, are so very much appreciated. I know I speak for many parents when I say thank you for all you do in a far-too-after thankless profession. Teachers are everything in this district, so thank you again. That's my board report.
Thank you. All righty. Director Bassett, are you ready to go with the board report?
Sure, I am. I will go fairly quickly. So, couple things, and one is, you just alluded to the Seven Dreams, they are in the process of hiring an executive director. That group will meet tomorrow night, I serve on that board, and they have quite a great pool of candidates who actually applied, so we'll see what happens there, is all I'll say about that. And of course, the Seven Dreams is no longer a board committee of this board, however, the longstanding relationship, and it transitioned. It had been in the past. So, we've talked about the FAC, and we're going to be having that on the work session tonight, so I won't really dwell on that. But I will say that one of the extensive reports that I've shared with the superintendent and with this board has to do with redesign. Our redesigned Family Services Collaborative has been a longstanding program in this district and received awards and honors over the years. Right now, they're in a transition now, and so they're in kind of an important, in a delicate spot. They're in a delicate spot because they actually, in the transition, they have a director, a chairperson, and they have no executive director. So the executive director, or the chairperson rather, has made a petition to the district, and actually she also petitioned me because I am the board liaison to that committee, knew this year. And in that capacity, I've shared to directors what they say their challenges are, and made it very clear to her that whatever resolutions that need to come, they would come from the superintendent's desk. And that's not my role, but we were making sure that we get that information to our superintendent, which we have. They have some serious fiscal challenges, and at a time when fiscal challenges is something that we're wrestling with in the district already, even more important than that we, I feel like I'm transparent with colleagues, and then certainly with our superintendent, and not getting in her way so she can manage through whatever needs to happen over there, but they definitely need to happen. And the last thing I'll say is that it was nice to see the Cooper kids here tonight. I actually had an opportunity to go over there and visit and see some of those IB program projects that the students did. There were several that were just, you know, they were all outstanding, you know, of course that's what I think. But they were, you know, one of the students was really looking at coding and was looking at how Python can work to code, very sophisticated, you know, kind of research they were doing, I was really impressed. Another student talked about her ability to be an art critic, and she was very critical about modern art, and so I found that really amusing. Then there was another study, oh, two that really kind of really took me away. One was this young man who was doing a study strategically, how many credits he had to earn for him to get into the college of his choice, and he's a sophomore now, but he was plotting that all on a chart and figuring out how many credits he needed to get so they can get into his college. I just love that one. And then there was a young lady who actually did a study on gun violence, and she happened to have been one of our students who was in one of our schools when there was an incident. And she just did a marvelous job. She had, of course, we were in the news, so she had a news clip. But I just want to say that I couldn't have been more proud, knowing that we are investing again in our IB program, and that how much those kids really were doing. And that's not only them, it's across this district, because we've all seen some of the other students and the things that they do. So with that, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Wu told you of a report for us?
No.
Thank you. I'll go next, and then we'll work our way that way. So I attended the Community Education Advisory Council meeting last week, and there was a presentation by the staff about a program that they have for adults with disabilities. If an adult has had a stroke or a traumatic brain injury, they have an education program for adults that helps them learn to read and build up their reading skills and their math skills and their ability to write a paragraph. This is not rehab, it's education, and it's free, and it's over at the Crystal Learning Center. I was so impressed by it, and I am so glad we have it, and I hope I never have to use it, but I'm just so glad that they have it. Also, the Community Ed brochure is out, and registrations are being taken, so take advantage of the great classes that are being offered by Community Ed.
Pass.
I just really want to quickly, in addition to thanking our volunteers, I wanted to point out that it's After School Professionals Week. So thank you to everybody who makes after-school a great time and space for our students, whether that's in Minneapolis Kids, the basement, sports after-school, any of those things. So I just wanted to say thank you. Anthony, please pass that on to your team. And then also, the 23rd Administrative Professionals Day, so thank you Molly and everybody else who keeps us all on track, so.
Thank you. Director Bowman?
Yes. I did also participate in the EA of the Year Award, a long process. We only had two candidates that we had interviewed, we had 11 candidates that initially surfaced, and eight or nine of them decided not to participate in that program. But it's always, I was on the, I've been on the Teacher of the Year and EA of the Year before, and it is always really uplifting to see the passion that they bring into the room, so thanks for that. And the biggest thing, along with all the normal stuff we do as board members, was the pop-up events that board members had the opportunity to sign up for, to do touchpoints in the community, talk to the community members. And I would be remiss, I really want to thank Cub Foods on 36th and Crystal for their welcoming me. I ended up feeling like family afterwards. I believe that that was probably Alyssa's pre-work into the thing. I wasn't made to feel like I was in the way, so that was really important. I also want to thank Alyssa for the pop-up kits that she has provided for us. Within seconds, I was able to walk in and put together a really professional-looking table that was, that drew people to it. I think one of the big things was the very large QR code. I didn't put candy on the table, because that always draws a crowd, but they only want the candy. But they were drawn by the QR code and saw the message in the front, the Robinsdale emblem in the front. And I talked to 76 people over the course of three nights. There were, they were rather extensive conversations. I was nervous after the cuts that we have made, there's nothing like saying, standing in a group of people or among people you don't know, hi, I'm on the local school board. I was grateful to not get a single negative comment out of all 76 of those people. I was fully expecting it. I think one of the real poignant ones was a teacher who was a year away from tenure, who spoke to me, and when I said, I'm on the school board, I kind of ducked, because, you know, again, I was not knowing what to expect out of this. And she was kind and gracious, and said that she saw the need, she understood the need, and was hoping that she could get back into the district. It was very nice. I also talked to a member from the reimagine committee, who praised the fact that we did not put school board members onto the reimagine committee, but she also pointed out the work that Dr. Wu-Tu had done with that committee, and she felt that you were a wonderful addition to the committee, but was grateful that you went peacefully. So, I thought I would pass that on to you. The concerns from people were really concerns of, yes, let's get this rebuilt, let's get this rebuilt. There were many people in this district from the community who understood that we have been in financial situations, that we should have perhaps cleaned up in the past, and we did not. There was just, weirdly enough, an overwhelming sense of goodwill from the community over those three nights. And I really want to thank Dr. Stallow and the staff, because to me, it indicates that you have been in the community, you and your team have been communicating into the community, and that the community understands what's in front of us. And that was the most apparent thing of all the 76 conversations that I held. So, I appreciate the work of the staff from the district for making it easy to step out into the district and have conversations with people in the community. So, if you have an opportunity to grab Alyssa and sign up for one of those pop-up events, if not now, maybe we'll do it in the future, it's a wonderful way to be very engaged with the community in a short period of time. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you Director Bowman. Okay, all right, so, before, this is the end of our agenda, I just want to say thank you volunteers, thank you after-school care workers. The survey is open until May 4th, is there a move to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved, seconded by Director Wu-Tu. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Okay. We are adjourned, we will start the work session at 5 to 9. We are adjourned, we will start the work session at 5 to 9.
We're back. It is 8:56 and a half on Tuesday, April 22nd, and we're in the work session for the Robinsdale School Board. I'm Greta Evans Becker, the Chair, and we will introduce ourselves, welcome everyone. We're just going to introduce ourselves around the table, and then we'll get started. Director Bowman.
Oh, thank you. Helen Hassett, School Board.
Nick Woods, School Board.
Aviva Hiller, School Board.
Anthony Webb, Executive Director of Community Education Athletics and Activities.
Amy O'Hearn, Executive Director of Community Resources.
Willie Howard, Athletic Director and Activities Director at Robinsdale Cooper High School.
Larry Tate, Activities and Athletics over at Robinsdale Insurance.
Kristen Hoheisel, Chief Financial Officer.
Caroline Long, School Board Member.
Cam Holm, School Board.
Renee Bowman, School Board.
Terry South, Superintendent.
Meg Walzberger, Attorney for the School Board.
Molly Olson, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and School Board of the District.
Eddie White, New Member Stanton, National Director. All righty, thank you, welcome. Okay, first thing up is activities and athletics. Director Bowman.
Sorry, thank you. Well, it's obviously not March 17th. This is a continuation of this presentation on March 17th. I didn't change the date on the presentation there. But we talk, March 17th, the cable, we need to go through the slides. Purpose of this, purpose of this here presentation, once again, is to understand how activities are allocated in Appendix B, or review the entire Appendix B, which is a refresher of that, of understanding contractual parameters of reducing cooperative activity, review the initial considerations and the impacts of those, as well as then come forward with an official recommendation, and receive feedback from the school board on how we sort of move forward. And then I also said review, but then there's, there's more, they review some of the equity questions. I know there's questions about equity in activities, so we have some data that we have to report out, so we review that sort of at the end of this presentation, if you have any further questions. This is just, once again, repeating from the last presentation, you know, what Appendix B does is part of the teacher's contract, and establishes levels of compensation for activities, you know. And it says, so it's saying, if we have a level of, you know, basketball, this is what that compensation is for head coach, assistant coach, the staff in the third, that's what that Appendix B does. And some of the parameters that we operate within contractually is if we were to reduce the level, A, we have to have school board approval. And so we can't just reduce the coaching stipend, we have to reduce or eliminate an entire level, and then that takes, that takes school board approval. You know, so that's some of the parameters. What it does also say in here within these parameters, is that we do have the flexibility, which is going to lead to our recommendation, you know, we stack the levels as they are available versus, you know, sort of a blanket, you know, this is what this school gets, this is what this school gets, we stack by, by the levels that are, that we have student participation numbers for, right? Is what, is what is also within the contractual language. So, our proposal later on this evening won't be something that's not contractually by. You know, remember the initial considerations, you know, we talked about eliminating a level of competition from the following activities, baseball, basketball, football, soccer, softball, volleyball, and wrestling. Those were, you know, activities where we do have, we do have good participation, but they have more stipends, they have more levels. So, we, the initial consideration, not necessarily recommendation, but consideration was, hey, what if we did only offer, you know, two or three levels versus three or four levels? And what would that financial impact be? Also, for consideration was co-opping some of the following activities based on participation numbers. And it said, B slash G stands for boys and girls, but it's not co-opping the boys and girls together, it's the boys' teams from both schools, the girls' teams from both schools, I know that question came up the last time. You know, so we looked at golf, golf, boys across because girls across is already co-ops, and both boys and girls tennis. As you all are familiar with co-ops, as I've brought them forward before, they require board approval, and they last for two years. They can last beyond that, but they are set for two years for sure. And then the other consideration was to eliminate middle school wrestling and restructure some of the middle school clubs, like math club, chess clubs, we run through community education. Not the wrestling, but the clubs, the middle school wrestling, we would have, one of those will, A, provide the opportunities for those students to potentially play up field levels there, or, you know, promote the youth association that we have that supports our wrestling in the district already. Of these considerations, the annual cost was projected to be around, cost savings is about $200,000. You can go through all the, all the eliminations of the levels and co-ops and things of that nature. And the, and the impacts of those, the initial consideration we knew would be disproportionate impact to individual schools, you know, we have two, we have more than two, two high schools that offer activities, you know, have you sent students to both of those high schools. But we have different participation rates at those schools, so to do a blanket, just cut level, you know, from, from baseball at one school and cut that same level of baseball at a different school at the other school, has a different impact on our student participation and student opportunities. It reduces opportunities for students to participate in activities, because we'd be reducing levels. And then, but it does strengthen, what is that? Because it sounds like a, what the impact, so one of the positive impacts would be, would be it will strengthen numbers for activities with long enrollment, you know. It doesn't, it doesn't grow your enrollment, it doesn't grow your participation, but, you know, you, you know, you can better, I think, field levels, or you would offer, offer certain levels. And once again, another impact would be that annual savings, $2,000, $200,000. The following slides are just some of the detail we discussed in the previous meeting, so I won't go through this, but this is, you know, I gave you the summary, but this was the savings, you know, per, per, or per reduction, if we were to, to eliminate a level. But what we got from, not just from our meeting last week, you know, not last week, on March 17th, you know, the appetite really wasn't, wasn't there, you know, because it does have, it has a huge impact, yes, there's a cost savings, it has a huge impact on sort of the core function of, you know, not the academic, not the instructional leadership component of it, but the student participation, student engagement piece that really, a lot of students say they want, you know, they, you know, I think every community session, every student meeting that I've been a part of, I was just, I had student meetings today at Cooper High School, did one last week at Hyatt, I've been in all the community meetings, activities has been something that has always bubbled up in those conversations about wanting to be able to maintain, you know, and even grow our participation, right? So, so that wasn't one to be put forward as a recommendation, those are initial considerations, all of, all the things we, you know, had there for consideration, would have required board action, bringing that forward to you all to say, hey, if we go down this direction of eliminating the level, it'll have to come to a board vote, you know, that would, that would have been the requirement. Working with the ADs, the school administration, getting feedback, once again, from our student population, what we did, we referenced this last time, where we looked deeper into the implementation of a coach-student ratio, really, really staffing to the level, you know, and then, and then exploring opportunities to increase revenue. This is the one area where, you know, we can increase the revenue. Now, I would say, it'd be great to increase revenue to break even, that's probably not the reality of how high school or, or school activities run, but we can increase the revenue, you know, through various, various means, we'll talk about in the next couple of slides You know, with the, with the coach-student ratios, you know, we utilize the data per sport, you know, to create a ratio that provides, still provides mentorship for students while maintaining safety within the sport, you know, that, those are big pieces. I know that both Willie and Larry have looked at sort of, you know, what other districts do as far as, you know, what is a good ratio for, you know, a football coach to a number of student participants for a basketball coach. So, there, so we have, you know, additional data, you know, for that that we could share, but that's just really in the weeds, but we do have that data about, hey, you know, this is what it looks like a good, you know, student-to-coach ratio would look like. The, the impact of going with that student-to-coach ratio is, you do have a more equitable distribution of resources, so, once again, versus us, you know, saying, hey, this is what Schedule B says, you know, we have, we have eight coaches set aside, you know, in Schedule B for, for basketball, and then we had, we're allocating resources for both schools for eight coaches, now we will look at the actual participation and say, hey, you know, we only got three, we got three levels over here, we got two levels over here, we're funding, funding it in that, in that way. And our CFO can always check me on the numbers, and she'll say, that's not really how it works. That's how it has worked, you know, and those are things we're trying to tighten up on. Am I wrong when I go, yeah, which way don't you lose? Correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, the, the initial cost savings is actually higher, probably higher than $100,000, you know, that's really a conservative cost savings, looking at our current participation, that's based on what our current participation rates are, looking at both Armstrong and Cooper, we know that we would have a cost savings here. Right now, you see the numbers of, you know, what our, our data is for Armstrong and participation, our data is for Cooper for participation, you know, that, so allocating the resources based on participation would lead to a, lead to a cost savings, that can be, looking at this year's numbers, it would have probably been closer to $200,000 if we took that approach, but, but we also have the goal of increasing participation, right? So, so you can, you can have initial savings, but if participation grows, then you don't see those savings, but you, but now you have more students engaged, which is our ultimate goal, just, just to say that. Go ahead.
What's unduplicated? I mean, I know what it means, but here, in context.
Unduplicated, so, is when they, we keep, we're just counting for one sport, well, we're counting for the actual, they might play multiple sports.
Okay.
If this, multiple sports is duplicated, so if we counted one student who played basketball, softball, and soccer, that would be a duplicated count, right? But if we're just counting that one person, one time, no matter how many sports they play, because.
And what's the rational rationale behind why you did it that way?
It helps us with, at the actual student participation, when you're talking about overall percentages, otherwise you, you know, I do have some data on our, on my MDE reports that we do it duplicated data, especially for middle school, they don't always do that duplicated, and you'll see, we have nine hundred students participating at a middle school that has three hundred students, right? So, you're, you're counting them over when you do duplicated data, so you're really trying to get a true count of student participation, so you do unduplicated data, so you're not counting it once, or twice, two or three times.
To add into that, too, I'm going to sort of say, high school league and what we have to report to MDE, we have to give them both the unduplicated and duplicated numbers.
And the reason I'm asking is just because you want to see which sport is getting, you know, which, which order is running in the team and supporting, that's why I was.
I get you, I get you. So, we do have both, both counts. So, and then, and then the ultimate impact of, of going with the student-coach ratio is maintaining opportunities for students, so we're not taking the action to, to eliminate levels within the contract. Those levels are still there, but our, how we fund those levels will still, could be based on particip, actual participation. Some of the strategies we discussed, as a team, with regards to increasing revenue, A, if some, some other districts are going this direction, is charging admission fee for lower level, lower level games, especially the indoor, indoor activities, for instance, basketball, you know, one of the indoor activities, we would charge an admission fee for the freshman game as well, versus just waiting for the varsity. We get a lot of people come for freshmen, and they just stay for all three games, we're, we're, you know, not gaining revenue. We're, we're, you know, not gaining revenue, there's some good charges, admissions fee there.
Oh, no.
Oh, sorry. Um, uh, increasing the, uh, cost of ticket, uh, cost pack, we have ticket packages that we sell on hometown ticketing, uh, right now that is one twenty-five and you get a set of twenty-five ti-, twenty-five home tickets, um, so increasing that by ten dollars to one, one thirty-five, um, you're still paying cheaper than what you would pay, you pay per game, um, that's for the, the family package, so you get twenty-five tickets for one thirty-five, uh, should see some, some, uh, increases there, but they're really looking at how we do advertising in the district, they have to look at our advertising, uh, it's not an administrative procedure, but advertising policy on what we allow, um, and how we do advertising, but there's, there's opportunities there. We do have, um, some on our scoreboard, I think even tech advertisers, we can have opportunities to, to do a lot more, uh, with advertising and, and generate revenue there. Uh, and then one thing we discussed, and we, we haven't, we have some ideas, but, um, but really as a team we'll continue to work on, if we want to move towards a, a, a system of, uh, implementing the student activities access fee, you know, and what that is, in theory, is just like we have a technology fee, you know, we, if we said, hey, every student, this is an example, this is, this, we have researched the actual numbers, but he said, hey, you know, um, seventy-five dollars, we get another year, gets you access to all home, home games and events, right? That, that generates revenue right there, but there's costs, there's barriers to that, and this is why we have to put that as an actual number, um, recognizing that just free and reducing things of that nature. Uh, but that's, that's an opportunity, um, used by probably most of our, more private type schools, where you, you can just pay a fee and you get access to all the, all the homes though, but that's an opportunity, um, to explore, to increase revenue. Um, the impact, since there's increasing revenue offsetting some of the overall cost of running activities, remembering that we, we wouldn't break even, you know, you're not gonna break even running activities, um, but we, we put a dent into some of that, um, some of the overall cost of that. It does say the district, some dollars, but you're not gonna break even, you're talking about middle school, high school activities. Uh, before we go on to the next, any questions about just that part, the next, the next part of the presentation is about the, sort of our, our equity components and things of that nature.
Have you, um, explored a donation box at activities?
Hmm.
Like, think KOMO Zoo, I mean, they operate it out of P and then versus.
We have not, I don't, I, we have not, I think, we have not, so to answer that question directly, we have not explored that, um, but we do have our, we have our boosters, right? We do a lot of driving the donations and, 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 you know, contributing revenue back for various activities, and we like to always strengthen those booster, uh, you know, clothes and things of that nature, but we have not explored just like a donation box though, so that's something we do.
Director Bowman.
And is there any, or have they ever, in the past, I'm wondering about, um, co-opping with the cities, um, to see if there might be support there, you know? Uh, at one time, most of these cities, well, they all have park and rec budgets, not only do they have park and recreation budgets, they usually have budgets that come, uh, through their police departments, various juvenile ser-, you know, meaning young people services, those kind of things. And is there any opportunity that we could explore, uh, looking at, nothing else, maybe even the middle school kids, high school gets a little more tricky, but, um, uh, looking to the cities to see if they would help, um, fund or work with us on the middle school programming for athletics.
Um, I'll let that AD speak to a little bit, but I'll start it off. Uh, we have not explored co-op with the cities. Um, we did discuss when we had, when we had the conversation about, you know, whether or not to, to eliminate middle school altogether, what it would look like for some of our youth associations to come in and take over middle school sports. Um, that being said, the, the fee structure's gonna be very different, we don't control the youth, so they are independent and to see if there's a, a partnership, you can work on some fee structure, but it's gonna be very different than what our current fee structure is for students there. Um, and then every, uh, opportunity that we currently offer at middle school, we don't have a, a, a club that offers that same thing, I'll let, you know, they, they know more about it hands-on than I do, but I think that's really what we took, discussed, like, we don't have a club for maybe volleyball or some of the middle school stuff that we might offer.
The other thing you have to consider when you do co-op and with, um, the other thing you have to consider when you do co-op and, especially with our middle school programs, with the cities or anybody surrounding us, is transportation. At least when we have our middle school programming here, we're able to provide transportation to the activities, where if we were to co-op with city of Minneapolis for chess club, we might be asking those interested to travel to and get their own. So that's, there's, there's, there's a lot of things to look at.
But would that really actually prevent us from looking at the, at the discussions? Because I know that there's money out there coming in from various sources, from the county for youth and, and through cities, and I know that there are obviously barriers that maybe haven't been discussed, but it shouldn't prevent us in the long run from, if it's, if it's viable, which I, I think it is, we used to do programming, uh, that way in the district, you know, I hate to go into the past, but when I was mayor of Crystal, uh, we set up a computer room and the district gave us teachers and we already had staff in the building and we had this wonderful relationship of utilizing the community center for auxiliary programming for the school district. I, I don't know that life has changed that much that it makes it impossible, but it seems to me they should be willing partners in our efforts to raise the bar for our students in this district, because they're part of this district. So I would advocate for it and I would stand up in front with you guys and, and help you advocate for it, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna rip my hand.
Okay, Director Tatum.
So maybe, uh, kind of, when I have to think about how long the same lines, uh, so Director Tate, were you here, I think you were, when the district went through, uh, hard times and, uh, middle school sports was stopped, and we actually worked with the cities and there's, there's city departments to actually provide those services, were you here again?
I know I was here when they eliminated middle school football. I remember when we had middle school football and then all of a sudden we didn't have middle school football. I don't know if that was when I was a teenager.
I don't know, there was, there was, we're relationships with the cities, uh, parks and rec specifically to provide middle school sports because we had no money. So I, I wondered about that question, but it sounds like, you know, but my, my question though, really kind of has to do with, uh, it's, it's maybe, um, it's related but not quite, because, um, the fine arts aren't represented here, and I know that you, you kind of are athletic directors over both of those things. So if we look at participation, and I'm sure you have, along those lines as well, for fine arts, as side by side to this, I mean, I, I don't know what the relationship is in terms of savings or cost or any of those kinds of things, and that may be a question for another time, but it's not often you get these two athletic directors here in Renham, UK, and so that's, and if we're talking about cost savings, and if we're talking about participation rates, and if we're talking about equity, that has been a, a long-going conversation in this district.
I do think, and I'll, um, Willie and Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, we did our participation numbers, it is all encompassing, uh, of the total participation at those individual schools, so it does include fine arts, it's just when we did the, when we did the, the reductions, because fine arts is at like the levels, they have like that director or, you know, tech director, we didn't do a reduction to the fine arts, because the reduction component is strictly athletic side, but then I believe the participation numbers that are show, shown there, here, also includes fine arts, you know, yeah, so, so that, that's, that's all the participation at that school, but the reductions didn't touch that part because it, we're talking about reducing levels and not individual, uh, like, a tech director or something like that.
So, so that's a two, that, so it's helpful to know in terms of the fine arts.
So what's the percentage of unduplicated, duplicated, because there is what? Maybe, uh, you know, that's the whole picture. Yes.
So I think just circle on that is, uh, when we're talking about athletics, because we're the activities directors, we do both, when you look at that appendix B, it does have a breakdown, like you're saying earlier, that, for example, basketball may have five coaches, whereas our fine art, fine arts music director has one coach, and so taking the original consideration of saying the sport can lose a coach, we can't afford to say that music can lose one coach because it would lose the whole program. So in the situation where we have multiple coaches, the first consideration said that, but then when looking at the equity of saying, we want all of our students to have an equitable opportunity, this now says, fine arts for the most part won't have as much of a touch because of the fact that our participation is being very strong in that area and can continue to grow, and want to make sure that we have a advisor, coach, mentor there, whereas now with the sports, based on our sports, when we see a reduction in participation, instead of utilizing all five in the sports, we now have the ability to say in that specific sport at that school, it may be three because the numbers.
That's really helpful, and I'll go further and say I think it's very important that we include and kind of call it information because we have people who think we've moved away from. I think it's important for them to understand how much the arts have ever served.
Yeah.
And that's not stories being told, and I wanna know it, so it shouldn't be told, if I wanna know, I think other people may wanna know. So I think if there's a way to, to, you know, highlight that.
So, to be clear, we're not doing the two hundred thousand reduction, we're doing the staffing ratios for a hundred thousand dollar reduction and looking for ways to raise revenue. And the specific reductions with the, uh, ratios are, that is to be figured out.
Because it's determined by participation, right? Now, once again, if we, as, as we continue to promote and want to increase participation, then, then you start to reduce save, reduce the savings, I don't mean call them reductions, just calling them savings, you start to reduce the savings because now you have more students engaged, right? Which is what we ultimately want, but recognizing rebuilding towards that.
Okay, thank you.
Director Holmes?
Can you just put that in everyday context for people? Like, just do, pick a sport, I don't care, for example, for girls' soccer, this will mean, you see what I'm after, so people understand what we're going with.
So yes, I can help with that, uh, yeah, like, thanks. Um, so let's just use, for example, if we said at Cooper High School as an example, uh, Cooper High School, if we had four coaches that are in appendix B that are allowed to coach, and Cooper High School, uh, gets four for appendix B, which means you get a head coach plus three assistants, Armstrong's getting the exact same because we're equal in that regard. Armstrong has, say, seventy-five players that come out with four coaches, they would be able to maximize that if we did a one to thirteen ratio because they need all four to be able to support all their levels. Cooper with thirty-five players, as an example, coming out, would need all four because of the fact that we only have three levels of play, so therefore we are going to be able to have a savings because we're not gonna now utilize that coach to now add a coach to a level at Cooper just because we have it. Now, if we did that for every single sport as an example, let's say Cooper has more participation in boys volleyball than Armstrong does, then Armstrong would see a savings to the district, whereas Cooper is gonna be able to maintain all of them.
So I hope families see that, so they may see fewer coaches on the sideline wherever you are, but it's based on participation numbers and then.
And a ratio only, so that is a hundred percent, so it's all about every student in District Two Eighty-One, and our vision is saying, everybody, you go to Armstrong, would you say tennis is a one to ten ratio at both schools? So yes, they might have three over there, but they have thirty participants, we might, you might see one at Cooper because we have ten participants.
And I just, I just want that clarity for me.
One million percent.
Because we talk and breathe this, and so you might see fewer coaches, but it's based on.
And then to clarify, so the co-op is not going to happen or will still happen in addition to the ratios?
Co-op will happen as needed, we are, we are looking at, you know, um, it's just like it already has been happening, so as needed, if numbers are, are low, then they co-op to, to go to sport, uh, we, we are looking at our current participation in some of our numbers right now to decide, you know, what sports we'll, we'll continue to co-op. I know we had a list of, of the ones that we thought about with just with the general reductions, but we do have some that we probably gonna have to bring forward that, just like our normal process of, hey, this sport's low here, high here, let's co-op and go to sport, we'll continue with that, that process.
Thank you. Any questions?
I thought you said the fine art information was in a appendix B.
It's, it's actually in the teacher contract, so it's in, it's not in the, 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 the name of the teacher contract.
There are, there are similar to this, you do have.
Yeah, we have, uh, they are, I like this, so we'll get, we'll get you all the participation data, we have that. Um, we, that's, I like, I like the MacIntyre's, we have the data because I've already seen it, but, you know, that's because we do data reviews all the time, we'll make sure to share, to share that with you all. Uh, the next piece, you know, I wanted to just touch on equity and participation, you know, uh, we talk about the Minnesota State High School League and, and Title Nine, or just Title Nine in general, you know, um, it does require schools to effectively accommodate athletes' interests and abilities, um, regardless of sex, and provide equal opportunity and benefits and, and, uh, and opportunities, um, for the athletic teams. So, hey, now let, I'll let the two experts speak to this, but we do offer the same, we 're gonna go to the next slide there, this is, this is just Minnesota State High School League's commitment to equity, you know, um, as once again, we, you know, we've had some, some things that have bubbled up over the past few years, and, and they've really come out strong in, in being committed to, to the work of equity, um, around, around the state, you know, uh, so this is just their, their commitment statement, I won't read this out loud, but it, but it is, it is there, uh, and on the presentation for the public to view. Uh, you know, talk about just, um, this goes back to just some of that participation data, uh, what you can see, uh, when we talk about unduplicated numbers, you know, uh, is that, you know, our male, female participation at both schools is relatively, um, you know, relatively similar, you know, you don't see a wide gap in female participation, um, to male participation, um, at either one of our schools, so they do a good job of reaching out to, to, to all students and seeing if they have something that they can participate in. Uh, one of the things that, that we are required to do, and I think this is on this next slide here, um, is every year we're required to report our civil rights data, um, that's something, that's how the, sort of the state oversees to make sure that districts are in compliance with Title Nine, um, and just make sure they were providing equitable, you know, opportunities for both boys and girls. Um, you'll see that we offer the same number of sports, um, for both male and female athletes, uh, similar numbers of teams, and once again, teams are typically based on the number of participation, participants you have, um, but we have not been found to be highly compliant in, when it comes to, comes to Title Nine, we report this data every single year, so I wanted to make sure that, you know, um, from, from a district standpoint and what we do and what we try to do, uh, we definitely try to make sure we're not only in compliance, really just meet the needs of students and things, you know, that's, that's on my line. Um, and, you know, so if you have any questions around, around that, you know, um, I have the two experts here who can provide some clarity, but I can, I can try to, to speak to that as well. I'll call them, you must call them.
Was that a figure that I saw? It was, I didn't know if I was. All right. Um, so when we talk about the number of sports, and it's probably related to, how often are you surveying students about what sports they want?
We're required, I'm Minnesota State High School League, to do that at least every other year.
Every other?
We do it every year.
We're cheaters.
And our rule of thumb is, because, and ours is actually the same thirteen thirteen as Cooper's, the rule of thumb right now for Title Nine is if we add a male sport, we're gonna add, we're gonna find a way to add a female sport, just to keep that ratio. If we go to fourteen, we're gonna, we add fourteen up on the female side too.
Okay, and so how, how does that process work? And just going out of memory, because we talked about gymnastics not being offered as a, a girl's softball, so how does that look in terms of?
Girl's softball, we offer a girl's.
Um, it was club, it's just, I, don't focus so much on that, like, how, how does it specifically come, and I know where, I think briefly you mentioned flag football is coming up now and it's gonna be pretty competitive, but may pull away from another sport, so how, how do you, what does that process look like? Because obviously the students are changing constantly, and if we're doing it every year, and when you're trying to grow sports and participation, how do you not have too many, but the right ones? That's what I'm after.
I, I, so I think the, the good thing is continuing to amplify student voice and being able to have the stakeholders like today's listening session, and, um, last year, beginning of fall, when you had some students, using Cooper as an example, for flag, because we are participating in flag this year, uh, complained that we didn't have an opportunity to do a power, often they expressed interest in, in participation, so because of that, they had an advisor that started the club, so that's kind of what started, two years ago, both schools had boys volleyball, starting knowing that it's going to be a Minnesota State High School League moving forward, so we got in front of it, but it was a club versus us running it, so opening up more clubs and giving them the opportunity to kind of see if it sustains first, before we say, hey, school board, we're gonna come to you because we want to put now in the appendix B the need for said coaches, and then we have two people that want to come out. On the flip side, if we have the opportunity where an individual says, hey, I want to participate, uh, then we talk together and say, would it make more sense for us to now look in our area to see if there's a school that's already doing it that would be willing to co-op with us, but unfortunately, a lot of, um, schools in our area are in the same situation as us in terms of words with their offering, and trying to figure out, for example, I can say that, then as an example, people are speaking about it, but do we have the true need and desire from enough people to sustain it? And then it comes with the equipment that you have to buy, et cetera. So that would be the process, carrying them out, giving it a trial run to see, will it sustain it? And if we see that it does, then it becomes, okay, how do we now let that become something?
So that trial through the club.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I do not see.
I do not see any other questions. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and answering our questions.
Thank you, Jane.
Appreciate that.
So just to double check the support of this movement, just, I know we don't vote, but just want to be sure, because there really is no action Anthony that will come forward at all.
Is your thumb? Okay, we have six thumbs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on. Okay, the next thing up is the follow-up from the April 7th work session. And A is the financial advisory council discussion, because then we'll get on to other things, then you'll be able to.
I feel a little isolated at the table.
Enjoy the space. So board members were asked to look at the bylaws that were given and make suggestions. Also, we got a copy of the bylaws redlined, and those were your suggestions?
Yes, so, and thank you to Director Vassik, who, we, we spoke before the meeting today. In part because, and honestly, this would be my error, you, the redline version that was provided within the packet would be coming from me. It did not indicate with the watermark draft, because honestly, I was thinking like, how policy is presented, where it struck through, and there's redline, and that was how I was moving forward. However, I did change that, put a draft watermark, and gave editing ability prior to the start of the listening session. So if you have access to your email, you should be able to go in there and see those changes that were made and the ability to add it if you so choose.
Okay, just a little point of order on the editing thing. I don't think that board members are allowed to have a document that we can all edit because that's like a mis.
Then don't edit it.
So do not edit it. Enjoy the changes that have been suggested. We will discuss changes, but we are not, as board members, allowed.
So we'll discuss the changes and that interest in.
And you can implement the changes, but the rest of us cannot be doing that. Director Vassik?
But if anybody, you know, I like to have the document, so if I'm going to suggest changes on it, I can use the document myself. That's different from simultaneously editing the document. So for individual directors to make whatever their suggestions, edits, comments, that's review, we were asked to review it, and that is, in my mind, review. So I just want to make that clarification, because people can edit a document or make suggestions to it, and then, you know, we're going to come together and have a best, a course final.
And so make your, make your own copy of the document that we shared.
That's me, you gave us a copy and a suggestion that we make our changes.
Exactly, that's all.
And then we, so we have ours, and we have yours, and can we just like go through this?
We, I would very much appreciate that.
Okay.
So, in going through, and just, just to set the stage a little bit, at, and a refresh, at finance, at the Finance Advisory Council, the conversation, at least the direction from them, was that they didn't feel as though the way that information is currently flowing, which is board members first, council second, that that was advantageous, nor was it the intent of or purpose of the council. So you're provided with the bylaws and the suggested changes that essentially would allow it to be a, back to kind of a formalized working document. In my opinion, the board has two directions. One, edit the bylaws to have a, a working council, and that is the, essentially what comes before the board seeing the material. Or you essentially eliminate the committee, the bylaws, and make it an ad hoc committee, no different than how you do policy or other work. So it's either adjust the formalized process, eliminate the formalized process, which would then create, that group would then become an ad hoc committee. So those are kind of the way I see as two operating directions moving forward.
Quick question, can you define what you see as the difference between ad hoc? Does ad hoc not have community members, or?
No, it, it, it's mainly getting rid of essentially the formalized process. It would still, I would still say you would have resident members, community members. Honestly, in an ad hoc, I would likely add personnel, maybe some union representation. Here's the teachers' union, here's, you know, and then board member. I mean, the structure would look different. The information flow would be more along the lines of, and it happens, it just happens in a, in a, maybe a clunkier way, it would be coming from me to help guide the work of, how the work is done and ultimately rolled out to the board, as opposed to the board going over applications and the more formalized process of how it's represented. It just becomes a little bit more informal. My intent would be to have the same working structure plus.
So ad hoc is more temporary, though, isn't it? So this would need to be a standing committee, I guess that's where I'm lost. And I want to hear, because Caroline started to speak to what other districts are doing around us, and those seem to be formal standing committees. It just kind of changes who's on it, but it's still, it, like, I don't, my understanding was it wasn't union-based, it was financial-oriented, and then there was two or three board members on it. And then the time portion of it was more in line with what you were saying, being weighted on that front, you know, fall-ish area. So is that?
Yeah, I think, I think that that's more in line. I think the formality of the bylaws in, in, in terms of, I don't know what all districts that you looked at, but I know both previous districts, we had a standing Finance Advisory Council, not an ad hoc Finance Advisory Council. But really, it was, so there were, I think, three board members that sat in each one along with, you know, other members. We had facilities, because there were facility stuff with it too, I don't remember it all. But X number of community members, again, looking for expertise, all those things, but really driven by the CFO or executive director. So I know here it's formalized in terms of bylaws. I don't think there were bylaws in any of the other two districts that I was in. The chair, like, just the formalization of a chair and voting, and like, it just. Yeah, it was just a little bit more flexible. I want to say, maybe flexible so like you could do the work, because the goal was that the CFO needs guidance and input and perspective and, and in timely ways, because, okay, we know this is going to be coming in front of the board in six weeks, we want to be sure that we're talking about assumptions and looking at legislation and how that impacts it. So standing committee, maybe, and I don't want to say the, maybe it is the bylaws and the quorum and some of the, there are pieces of this right now that it feels to me have stalled the work that you've been able to do with, with the Finance Advisory Council. We want it to be meaningful to the board, meaningful to the members, and helpful and useful to our CFO.
When it comes to finances, I like, I gotta say, I'm a big fan of rules, but I also want to defer to the expert. Is there one of the two that, gosh, if they would just voted this way, it'd be so much easier for me? Is there something in your head that's saying that?
The changes, the, the changes that are in front of you are honestly what it would need to make it at, at least to provide for more of the timeliness and the responsiveness to keep, keep the group moving, if you will. That's, I mean, when I'm looking at it in absence of, of, and other than the change of title, that, that's a lot of it. And when you remove that from it, there's not a lot of changes. But my, like, my four examples of, of the stumbling blocks, we, we are struggling, we are struggling to get a quorum at any meeting. I, I have yet to participate in a meeting that we started with. We might have gotten to a quorum by the end of the meeting, we didn't start that way. We have had, just as I, as I onboarded in, in August and September, the board was voting on the applicants. It says in here that that should be done by June. And the reason why it should be done by June is because that work starts, as you heard me talk tonight, we're already now moving into levy work. What happens when, when someone, we have a participant or someone who is on, hasn't shown up in two years? And so it says that my position makes the calls after missing so many meetings, and then there's no direction. So now that's guaranteed, no one's showing up. Is it through the application process, they technically haven't resigned? Now you're waiting until June, there's no way to, it, it, there's, there's barriers in formalization, just as there's advantages. And so what is presented is to say, this would help reduce the barriers while still maintaining a formalized process. On the flip side, if you go to a, a committee, if you will, you lose the formality, and the, the board has to be comfortable with that, but we're able to be more adaptable to how quickly information can change or participation or whatever is needed. That, that's the blessing and the curse to each side, and that lies in the board comfort level.
Director Vassik?
Thank you, Chris, thank you for your suggestions, even at the FIC meeting, because one of the things we talked about was assumptions. And the board is not, right now, receiving assumptions.
Correct.
Prior to the development of the budget, and that's an aberration from past times. It's been kind of looking along with it for a while. So I guess I would say that, and one of the things that you said at the meeting really struck me, you said you're kind of hamstruck. Either way, you're, you know, we're not following the guidelines we have, and that's an issue. So for me, the question becomes, what do we, what do we really want to get out of a Finance Advisory Council? That's the question for me, not, you know, some of the other things.
Yeah.
Because depending on what you want out of the Finance Advisory Council, and one of the benefits, and we talked about even establishing this, was an independent voice from the community, that integrated, included community voice, not to the exclusion of directors or staff, but a community voice that could go, that people really respected, that they could say, well, no, they really were doing the work they were supposed to be doing. And that has value, and it's, and it's, so it's up, in my opinion, it's up to the board to understand that if we have people who have been missing for two years and we don't know, why not? You know, I mean, so I think, I think there's some other issues at play, communication. I think there's some things for the board to grapple with, with regard to the bylaws themselves. And I don't, I certainly value your participation and things you've said, and I've certainly come to you and asked you for advice about things, and will continue to do so. I, I trust you a lot, you know, so I just want to get that out there. However, I think community voice matters. I think having an independent Finance Advisory Council, because other districts, when they publish something from their Finance Advisory Council, it has weight. Now, we have allowed ours to wander, you know, that's on us as a district, you know, and so that's really kind of how I see it. I'd rather kind of look through, you know, the time we've said we want to take a look through it. What was suggested initially, too, was to hear from the Finance Advisory Council. What they said loud and clear is, this is broken, we want to work. They, they said that. So the people who are there want to work, and they were honest, this is not working. And so it's really helpful to have somebody else say that, other than, because I, I, not me, you know, but, but I listen to them. So I'm really interested in us doing the work of working on these bylaws. Your suggestions are great, and they're not done. I think we said we were going to come back to the Finance Advisory Council, so they're looking for another pass, if I, if I understood them correctly.
My understanding is, my belief is that they are waiting for the board to make a decision. That's my belief. On, on, on either a bylaw change, they're, they're waiting for any sort of direction that isn't currently what is in front of us.
Okay, cool. That's, that's kind of what I thought, so I thought our work was to really look at these and work on.
So we, we worked on policy the last time, we'll continue to work on policy, but, but the reality is, even in the bylaws, it states, you know, that, that the committee would come before the board in June, which hasn't happened for a few years, to give it an annual summary. Well, there's nothing to summarize at this point, other than we've done some policy work. I mean, I am a rule follower by all sorts, but to the core of me, and, and I've said it from the beginning, we want to follow the established rules. Rules are not able to be followed as the, the way they're designed.
Director Helen Brad, and then Director Holmes.
One thing that, what I heard is the main reason that things aren't working right now, in addition to like some of the functional things, like how many people and who's on and who's off and how they come on and off, is really, the core question is, what is the purpose? And if we, if the purpose is, as it says in these bylaws, that CFO brings information to that committee first, because these are people who will work in finance and other hands, in financial information all day long, and then they make recommendations that then are brought to the board, and then the board sees the information. Otherwise, if they're hearing it after, there's really no point. So I think we have to decide if we are going to, if we want the committee to function the way that it's intended in these bylaws, and then we have to accept that they're going to make recommendations, they're going to see things first. So that, I think, is the core question. So I don't know if we want to.
That's a great.
Ask how people feel about that, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I think that was the biggest issue, because if they're seeing it after, it's, it, their, their expertise isn't going to help us, right? After the board's already discussed.
Well, I would like to, but I would like to do is call Director Holmes and then get a feeling. Okay, Director Holmes gets a chance to speak on this, and then what I would like to do is get a feeling from the board, what the preference is for the members of the committee.
So I did, what was that? So my purpose for the board is to review district financial statements and provide advice to the board and the finance department regarding financial issues and emerging industry trends. That's one of the, I don't recall which district it was, but it, it made total sense to me, and that's why I wrote that one down. There are tons out there like that. I see them as experts. I think the board still needs to review applications, separation of church and state. I think it gives a good, solid balance to the community, and what you're talking about. You can give valuable input on what we should be looking for in those applications, but the whole board should be seeing them. It's a board committee in my mind. I love changing the time around, I'm glad that you're on board with that too, because everybody's been asking for it. And then as far as participation, I think part of the reason we haven't had participation is because they have recommendations and red flags for the board to consider, and they were never considered. I mean, I, I looked back at the past four reports, and they all had the same things. So if we get this done right, that's going to turn that committee around. But I do see it as a board committee, and so there's tweaks in here I would put in terms of CFO is included, but it's also responsible to the board. I mean, that's the ultimate, and I made those changes. I don't know if we're going to actually discuss those or if we're just stuck on the purpose right now, but I think it's a valuable tool. It also helps that you said you don't want to be making assumptions alone. I'm fine with them seeing information before I, because board knows they'll summarize it and provide substance to us to make solid decisions.
Okay, so I think we have to make sure, as we're all on the same page, about the purpose of this group of people, whether it is this group or whether it's a committee of the board. So if you are in favor of the purpose of this group being to get information from our CFO, figure things out, and make recommendations to the board, and this would mean they would see information about the budget and numbers and things before the board would. Would you hand up your thumb up or something?
I have a question.
Me too.
But isn't that what we were talking about?
Right.
Question. So do you have a question?
Me first?
What?
Me first, because they said they have a question too, so out of the three of us, who are you probably not first?
You.
Okay. I, I guess for me, I'm fine with them seeing the information before me, but I, when I get it, I want to see the exact information that they saw too.
So when you get the report, then it's like, this is the information we saw and this is how we are, what are recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, Director Holmes, you had a clar, oh, Director Bowman, you had a clarification, question?
Yeah, and, and, you know, to Director Long's point that you just made, my concern, I just have a lot of concerns. I just have a lot of micromanagement concerns. I have concerns of people feeling like they're doing work here and then they're doing work here again and the work still isn't being, you know? I think my biggest concern about all of this is before I'm willing to make an agreement, I would like to see the details pounded out and the agreement very specific as to what we're agreeing to. Because in the past two years on this board, we have argued so much about committee work. And I just see this as being another potential issue unless we're able to actually nail down the roles and more importantly, decide to abide by those roles. Because one of the things I would hate to see is to have Kristen get through months of work only to have to come back to the board, which I've seen this done, and have board members say, well, I don't know. And we should have been in touch with, and we should have been given this, and we should have been given that. And, and I'm sure it works really well in a lot of other districts, but I think that my concerns on how we proceed with this are really bad. And I think that we need to, if we go down that road, I just want to see the clarity defined by bullet points or whatever that we can agree to. I'm not willing to let it be vague. Excuse me, I haven't commented on anything. So I'm not, I'm not willing to let it be vague, that's all.
Okay. First things first, the purpose of this group, shall we all agree? What, I mean, nothing to do with bullet points, nothing to do with roles or anything?
Or process.
Perfect, right, thank you. Just the purpose of this group. Are we all in agreement that they get information from our CFO on a timely basis and then they work on it and they bring recommendations to the board? And they might be seeing the numbers before we see them, but they're going to be making recommendations to us. If you see that as the purpose of this group, can I see a hand? Oh, that's everybody. Okay, we got a purpose.
Got a purpose.
Now, last time we were asked to go through the bylaws, is it your preference that we go through these bylaws and start with that? Or is it your preference to ditch the bylaws and have a committee?
More important, Kristen.
My preference is...
You're on the spot at all.
You know what, okay, and I, and I...
Maybe that's too hard.
No, no, there is a difference between my preference and what I'm going to say and what the board needs.
That's right.
Because my preference is to go to a committee. It moves faster, more concise, it's just smoother. However, if all of a sudden it gets to the board level and it doesn't feel good and we're going through and we're undoing and there's different things, now I've just been able to work through a process really fast only to hit...
That's right.
Something that doesn't make the board, that the board members aren't in a good spot. So ultimately, my preference, as much as I think it should have weight in your decision, you have to be comfortable with your decision.
Thank you. Okay, Director Holmes, do I show you a hand?
Yeah, I was going to say, though, looking at the responsibilities of the committee, it will be budgetary in nature, long-term planning. And then those will be things that the board will have to decide yes or no on.
Right.
So, but looking at that, I think it will be useful to use the language, if we stick to the bylaws, to give the CFO the powers that she needs to be able to work with the committees as needed. So when the recommendations are given, with or without the data, with or without our representation, we believe that it's coming from the community and we can decide to vote yes or no. Right? So I think the, what I'm reading here on the red lines makes sense to me so we don't hit those same roadblocks in the future.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
I like what Caroline said about getting the same, seeing the same material that the, because it's instructive and building capacity on the board of understanding, which is just as important as the work itself. That's important, that the board understands in the long term.
Where they came from in their decision making?
Well, that's what I just see it, yeah.
I was just...
Okay, yeah. So I think that, I like that. I think that that's important. I also think that at the end of the day, the CFO, just like the superintendent, is responsible to the board. And I think that the way the bylaws are written now, I think, I like the opportunity that we're all going to have to go through them because, and look at them and provide you with feedback, that's what I like. But, but working from bylaws that have some very specific rules, because what you said in the end about if you have a committee and the committee does all this work and comes to this board, good luck with that. I think, you know, I mean, it should, the bylaws should be clear. I think they should not hamstring you, but at the same time, it's for the board, you know? And we're a team. You have your job and we have our job and superintendent our job, everybody got a job. So bylaws help everybody stay clear about what their role is. And, and so I like that. And I'm happy with them. If they can get information and give us some good recommendations and I'd like to know what the assumptions are. How are we building this budget, based on what? Yes, thank you.
Director Long?
I still too want to say that we need to make sure that we are creating a system that's not about us or the people at this table, because it won't always be us or the people at this table.
Thank you.
Because eventually we all get old and we have to go on with our life to other things, right? And I don't think they want us here in our rocking chairs.
Director Holmes?
Is that an ages room? I just want to know right now, being representative of the ages community. We find that sort of offensive, but we'll wrap it, sorry.
Thank you for letting us slide, Director Holmes.
I'm just going with the assignment. So I would like to change it just from the treasurer to two or three school board members. And I think another component you said from the other districts is that you rotate which board members they are. Because it is our job to understand this and ultimately we vote on it. And I think that's a component that's been missing too. We tend to assign somebody to a role and then we leave it that way. And while it's good to have somebody who wants to serve, it's also beneficial for those of us. So that allows, if we increase that number, and I think that would help with the quorum instance too, but I'll leave that one for that.
The hardest part, vote. I understand with the quorum, but the voice of the board is the board table.
Right. So that wouldn't help with the quorum, okay? But it helps for communication to the board.
That's right.
So if we have multiple, so strike the quorum part, but at least then we can have updates at the board while you're doing critical work with them. And then we are getting some updates, so we're empowering board members to pass that on. And then we can allow for questions too, so both things are happening at the same time. And then again, I just changed some language in here that it ties it to, you know, after applications have been presented to the school board instead of you. That's kind of where I was going. And not to say you don't have recommendations on what we should be looking for or that application process, because lord knows we have to hammer that out still too.
I don't know that applications are presented to me. I think what happens is it's no different than what, what happened with a resignation of a board member and the appointment of a new board member. What happens if I'm mid-year and I don't have people? That's when I can add.
And I tweaked that, so then I went further and I tweaked that too. So it's, it's...
Just, can you just hold for just a second? This, you have great comments, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. We are going to be amending the bylaws, right?
Yes.
Everybody?
I thought that's what we were discussing.
It was bylaws or no bylaws?
Bylaws or committee?
I just did my homework, I was told to bring...
But you did, and you did a great job. You're, great job, love the comments. I just want to make sure we are all on the same page. We are doing bylaws and we're, okay. In that case, can we both do each of them? And then when we get to the ones that you are talking about, we'll, that way we'll just work our way through it. Because it's 10 o'clock.
You tell me, I just did what I was...
I know, and you're doing a great job and I love the comments. But I think if we are agreed, we have CFO Hoheisel's suggestions and then you have additional suggestions. The way to do it is to just like go through where her suggestions are and then if anybody else has other suggestions, we can just like hit on them. Okay? Okay, we're doing that. Starting out with the red lines, simple red lines on the first page. Any suggestions for changes on the first page? Besides the two red lines. Okay, we're moving on to the second page. Five to seven residents, instead of seven residents, it says?
Can we back up? Because we all agreed on the purpose. So is everybody okay with how the purpose reads? Or I gave you another one?
Okay, so then you have a suggestion for a purpose change. Okay, the purpose of the Robbinsdale Area School's financial advisory council to provide financial advice and support to the Robbinsdale Area School Board and senior administration that is consistent with the mission of the district. Council is accountable to the school board of the Robbinsdale Area School. And you want to elaborate on it with what's that you said earlier?
Sorry, correct, I just tweaked it because if we're talking about, yes, it's just more substantive in my mind. So the purpose is to review district financial statements and provide advice to the board and financial department regarding financial issues and emerging industry trends. And that tracks with the financial advisory committee. They were seeing enrollment trends, they were, that's why I strengthened...
I have no problem with that. Does anybody else have any problem with that?
With what, kids?
What she just said.
And it was, I didn't make it up on my own, it was from another district. I don't know all because I was looking at about...
Stop, stop, we're agreeing. Okay, I agree. Director Long, agree? Does anybody else agree with that as a, just an elaborated on purpose?
Yes, the other thing I'd say is, you know, and I don't think you said to omit this, but a part of the sentence talks about being consistent with the mission. So I just want to suggest that we keep that in there somewhere.
Can we add consistent with the mission in there? Director Holmes?
Sure.
Okay, we got her, we got... Okay, anybody else feeling okay with the, with the expanded purpose?
I, I will track, is that, were you just asking for that?
Sure.
Is that what you said? I was talking to Chris, yeah.
Expanded purpose?
I couldn't type it.
Okay, I see, anybody against the expanded purpose?
Because you're not the person, I'm not against it, but I...
Oh, I brought your hand, you didn't?
I guess, but not for that though.
Okay, yes.
Well, you know, unless I, I don't, I don't see it in writing right now. So I don't, I kind of understand the comments that were made about seeing things in black and white. If Director Holmes has done that work and she can make those and send those in, I would make my, I thought we were waiting for, I thought we were going to take it and do the work on it. And I tried to do my edits and I couldn't. So I'm just saying, I think that it is 10 o'clock. I think we have a couple of other things on the agenda. I think we ought to take this document, everybody take it and do whatever they need to do with it. I like visuals. And, and so I, I think we have consensus on important things, which is everybody's okay with working on bylaws and having a finance advisory council. And I think that's great. I think that's a great body of work for tonight. And then, because I want to take time on it. I don't like to come back later and say, what about this, what about that? I don't like doing that. And I would like to see what those things are in writing before I say I like it.
Well, we would definitely be voting on the whole thing as, as those changes.
Just have some time to do it, we don't have to do it all tonight.
Director Holmes?
I like this process that you're going through. So, yeah, because then I think that then we can get those red, more red line items in about what we exactly want. And then we can, at another meeting, look it over and say, are there any final changes?
Yes.
And then make final changes at that time. But I, I would like to talk through some of these things together.
Okay.
And we keep complaining about not having discussions about things, so...
Okay.
So... My procedure of question is just who's going to be responsible then for taking all these things and putting them together? Who are people going to send it to? Like, how are we going to move this forward?
If you send it to me, I can certainly incorporate it into the document.
Okay. I'm minding notes right now on what we agree on.
My one concern, back to again, and it's in the current bylaws, is right now I'm down technically one member, but officially, well, officially one member, technically two members. We're a month away from June and the work's starting and we haven't even started the application process, which then puts the timeline of the entire committee back down to, in all likelihood, new people getting named at probably closer to the end of summer. So I would then say, am I just moving forward with the committee as is and allow the board time to flesh this out? I mean, that, that's the reality, is if I'm truly following the bylaws again, I'm not following the bylaws. So I either need permission here to move forward as is, well, this gets squared up and new members get added, or I'm in the same situation that I've been in all year.
Can we give you permission to continue along with the red lines part of it? No?
Can I just, sure. What does the makeup of the committee look like right now? Like, who's attending? How many do you have?
I have five in totality. So if one misses, I do not have a quorum. Well, it's tight. I'm down two for sure.
And I'm including you?
I'm not a voting member.
I know, I was just talking about the committee, you are a part of the committee.
I am a part of the committee, but of your seven residents, I'm down to five.
Yep.
That's best case is five.
Okay.
And under this, it's just the treasurer.
So can we suspend something that could just operate and then we hammer this out? What are our options right there?
It's what the will of the board is. And so if you would like to make it be three, I'm willing...
Can he, can we suspend?
You can suspend the bylaws and hammer operating as, as the committee is currently operating, yes.
Yeah. With the date of having this complete by whatever.
Yeah, I would say to suspend that. Are you meaning to suspend it? And so that it will have three members or just suspend it?
You can suspend it in entirety, you can suspend parts of it, the board. I mean, these are, this is a document the board has the right to determine.
Okay. Yes?
I have to say, like you have anyway, just continue to go work it, because I'd rather for it to be done well.
Okay.
Right, but I struggle not following board-approved documents. I'm sorry, Greg. I have a, I personally struggle with not following board-approved documents.
Well, I think we all do, because I'm kind of like that too. But I think what we've heard is that in order for us to get to the other side, it's going to be a process, now whether we like it or not. So I mean, and so I think one of the rules is saying we're going to suspend these so that you can go forward and do the work.
Yes.
And we're going to do what we need to do. That's what this is.
Okay, so we, I'm just throwing this out here. We suspend these bylaws so that you can operate with the, with the F A C using the purpose that is defined and having three school board members on it rather than two, including the, you don't want the extra school or we only want the treasurer until then?
We just have suspended rules, so we're suspending...
We're suspending the bylaws.
Because we already have three members on it, that's that.
Director Holmes, what's your finger?
Are we to the point where we can make a suggestion? Because I would like to suspend the bylaws and operate with the treasurer while we craft the rest of the document.
But we already appointed two people to that committee.
And I say it's yet anyway. I mean, right now, because I, well...
Yeah, I already voted, keep going. I'll call on you another time. I mean, go now.
Oh, well, I was saying, I think we suspended the rules. The rules are the only thing to save the treasurer. That's it. So we already suspended that, we're already past that. So to continue as it is now, it's just us on the committee trying to do the best we can at this board, doing the work it needs to be. That's it.
Director Long, have you, did you ever read it?
I did, I, it's just quick, I just... I think I have something, yeah. Yeah, I was just going to say, if we're just suspending it, that leaves for no guidelines. That's, and that's what she's asking for is guidelines. So I, I'm a little, I don't know if we're giving her what she needs to operate.
Well, she currently can't operate on what it's telling her to operate with. So pulling the requirement for her to operate under these bylaws, suspending them...
She's agreeing.
I do.
We need some budget assumptions to work on. So what, what can help you get, continue moving forward?
The reality is I'm going to move forward with the committee that's already established just to keep going until it gets resolved. That's the reality.
Yep.
Director Holmes?
So a point of clarification. When we had committees, we talked about the treasurer being on FAC. We later had a discussion about it during agenda setting where it was said that there was an, oops, that was made, that there was really only supposed to be the treasurer on there. Because that is not what we discussed when we discussed committees. So I would be in favor of keeping it the treasurer until we can figure out some of this other stuff too, so that then you can operate. I would be fine with reducing the, or suspending the rule around how many committee members have to, to be involved in this as we work on this also.
Because we're doing five.
Right.
Director Holmes?
We need assumptions. So we suspend this, we do our work and it's the treasurer. That's just, we screwed up by appointing three.
That was me. That's me. I think I was operating.
I mean, whatever. So let's suspend while we hash everything else out and you can do what you need to do. I want to get out of your way. We've got five people on there, so we're not even approving anything yet. Just let them give their recommendations. That's my goal right now.
Director Bowman?
But it's an open meeting and people can attend just to observe, right? Great, that's all. And then if we can have the meetings posted, I think that, because sometimes what happens with these is instead of the meeting date being posted to all of us, which has happened over the last two years, it only goes to those people that are involved in it, which is really unfortunate. So, I mean, I, I plan on being at those meetings. We just need to fix the rules, but I plan on being at the meetings.
Okay, we have agreement from Director.
And I'll be a silent, sitting in the audience, but I will be there to observe. Just my role.
We have agreement from Director Bassett on that until.
Well, I already said what I agree to. And that is if we suspend it without the rules, that includes having the treasurer on it. And I will say that when we were at a committee meeting, when we were establishing committees, is when we made that decision. Now, if people went off to an agenda setting meeting and had a different discussion, that wasn't the board in the, it, it wasn't the board. The board did our committee assignments together as a whole. And so that's what happened. Now, we just said we're going to suspend them, but wait a minute. We want to make sure it's only the treasurer. Because it is an open meeting and, and like Director Bowman, I mean, I didn't give up my citizenship in America and go up the valley and on this board. So coming to a meeting and participating in a meeting is what I will continue to do. So it doesn't make any difference. People are going to see you as a board member. Where if you show up, they're going to see you as a board member and make a comment, whether you're a full show member of the committee or not.
Director Bowman?
Yeah, I was just wondering if I can move that the board decides to suspend this bylaws and give the power to the CFO to use the current committee that she has to continue to operate. So we put a formal bylaw in place.
Thank you.
That's what we said a few minutes ago.
Yes. Okay.
Motion.
We have a motion. And the second, please.
Second.
What is the motion again?
To suspend the, to suspend the bylaws. She takes the power to function with the committee that she has.
Exactly.
Okay, but the question is, that would be.
Just what he said, nothing more. That's what he said, what he said, and that's what we agreed to totally.
Director Bassett, stop.
Okay.
Okay. Director Wutao, when you said function that way, were you meaning function with just the treasurer as in the bylaws or were you meaning function with two additional people?
When there are two additional people already found the committee with you, so then yes.
Okay. So the motion is just suspend the bylaws.
Members on.
With those two board members on. With the two board members on. Motion is to suspend bylaws. CFO does, works with the committee, the two additional board members are.
Can, before we do that, can I go back and watch the tape to see what we did at that meeting? I'm volunteering myself to go back and look at that meeting.
And I just do what I just. And I do have a motion now.
There's a point of order. There's a motion on the table. And so there's, it's time to go.
Yes, I wrote down, review that meeting also, work session. I'm too late to review it and everything. We have a motion on the floor, friendly amendment. The treasurer be the chair of the committee. We've got to have some control, you guys. We can't.
Kristen is by the.
No, I'm actually not the chair of the.
The main member president is, one person chair on that committee. There's a citizen chair. That's the leader of that committee. That's a citizen chair.
Okay. True motion. We have a second. Suspend bylaws. Work with the committee. And there will be three people from the school board on that committee. There's a citizen chair.
Current invigoration.
Yes.
Are they voting members? Our board members vote? I mean, because it could be a case where you've got three.
Currently it's the treasurer that's in the voting.
Right, we're not. Yeah, we don't vote. I mean, we don't vote. Anything to vote on?
Currently it's the treasurer that votes.
Right.
Okay. With that parameter, treasurer votes, treasurer votes. Otherwise, we're stopped.
But honestly, if the bylaws suspended, I have no vote.
Well, that's right.
All right. If you can support that motion, please raise your hand.
Just, I'd actually call it all in favor. Just say all in favor.
All in favor, all in favor say I'm. Opposed, no?
No.
Okay. We have suspended the bylaws. You work with the committee. You'll have three board members on it. The treasurer will do the voting. Figure this out.
May I, may I request then, if this is moving on, that the Google Doc that was shared, please make a copy, make your suggested edits and return them to me. And I will make sure that that is incorporated into the document. If you don't like a Google Doc and all of that, I can get you a hard copy and you can write whatever you need to and send it back to me. Doesn't matter.
Just, just for the sake of time, I may suggest that we shouldn't send to you because I have a feeling if we, if we do that at a work session, we will still want to paint that information on.
But I can put them in, I'll put them even in different colors and everything so people can then have a visual of the words that are being spoken.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, if we already have our changes, we can submit them to you too.
Yes, I'm happy to grab them tonight.
Okay. We're going to move on to the next topic.
I'm sure just a point of order. We do have a work rule that the board agreed to in the last study session. Stop at 10:00. You've already exceeded that. And in order to continue, the board would need to vote to suspend that rule. Otherwise, you have committed to being done. And I would get insight from you, Superintendent, in terms of the importance of the next item on the agenda, whether it's. But, I mean, you adopt rules for a reason.
And the wheels tend to fall a lot on the quorum approximately between 10:00 and 10:30. Also, before we do that, I just want to relate to the last meeting. I want to say thank you, Director Wutao, Director Long, Director Yolobran. You came in under two minutes on your board reports. Other board members, not saying they're not good, but maybe cut.
I cheated them.
Please, that's okay. It's okay not to, it's okay not to have a report.
We always like that environment of winning. Right? It's only winners and losers.
Yes, so I would say just, just briefly, I, I think the only thing pressing that I really hope when we come back in two weeks, we can land on. Again, I took the liberty of revising the document that I gave you and changes aren't read and I should have put draft across because there's nothing final about this at all. But I want to talk through it with you. Probably the most, the most pressing thing that we want to do is we need to get a calendar of board meetings. I know I just already looked at my summer calendar and I'm like worried that I'm going to have to schedule over things. So one thing that I would offer, Molly's okay with it because I actually asked her to do it for me today. The sequence of when our meetings are, we could at least get on calendars. And then the content of are we going to still do a business meeting and a study session each night? Or are we going to move, try to move to a different format? But at least you'd have the dates saved. Would that be helpful to you?
Yes.
To at least have those dates? So Molly, are you okay? Will you do, just like you did for me, is forward those odds and people have them? And again, knowing we may have to change them if, when we actually approve it. Okay? Yes?
Are those different than we have right now? We're meeting the first and the third. It make a difference?
No, it's. If you don't, if you don't need, if you don't need them, she doesn't have to do it. I didn't have them in my calendar.
Okay, I would.
Okay.
But it's the same.
Same, same, yep. Same sequence, same dates. But, you know, just what we're going to do those times. Okay, so we'll do that so you have it. Otherwise, the professional develop, otherwise I can wait on that.
This is for two months.
For the rest of my study.
But please check your calendars before the next meeting so that you can know if you are available for weekdays or weekends from May through the summer. Director Long? Sorry, Director Bowman?
I just want to know that these items are obviously really important. Are they going to be the priority items in our next work session?
You're going to have.
Will they automatically be priority?
I think we can. I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, the, the next couple after that. I think we're going to, we're going to have. I mean, the, the last study session in May is jammed. And the last one in June is my evaluation. So I think we can get there, but I mean, it'll depend if there's other things that board thinks.
And then quickly, looking at the committee assignments, I looked them over. I'm on seven. Director Bassett is on six and everybody else is on three.
I think it's six.
I'm not sure, but that's, I've checked off. And so I was thinking that maybe I could get off safety. We could disband the transportation ad hoc and add Director Wutao. I would give you my community and it's a wonderful committee. Does anybody else have committee ideas?
Yes.
I don't know what's happening with Inner School either because I think they're meeting, but I'm not getting notices and I don't know.
And it's right now says everybody can.
And I was in our board with a date, so I, that's another one. We're, we're going to have to come back because that's another one that
Meanwhile.
I don't need to be on, it's Inner School, but it's stalled a little bit and could use some assistance.
My, so Inner School said anybody is invited to attend. All are invited to attend your school. All are invited to attend Inner School. All are invited to attend the 21 partnership. What it says on the.
Where's the, where's the meeting? Well, you're expecting your room to be on the video.
Meanwhile, we'll start with the community. I'll let Christopher Williams know that you will be the person on community. And then the rest of these decisions we can work through at a time. Anything else for the good of the order? Thank you.